Pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, the Bastrop City Council will hold a regular meeting on December 8, 2015, in the City Council chambers, 1311 Chestnut Street, Bastrop, Texas. To consider the following matters, call to order. I call us to order. We have a full quorum present. The chaplain, who was hoping to be here tonight to offer an invocation, is not able to make it. So, I think we'll do, you can either stand or sit, either one, but we're going to do a self-organizing invocation. I'd like you to take a minute to turn to the people around you, express your either prayerful or deepest thoughts about what it is that we need to be focusing on as we move into this meeting, as we think about our community, as we think about season that's upon us, and especially about the difficulties our country's been experiencing with those most horrible things that are in the news, the fear that people have about it, and so forth. Thank you all for what I know are very deep and helpful thoughts. One of the things that the faith that I have is we're big into forgiveness, and council membership reminded me that I skipped the pledges, so I hope you'll forgive me for that. And I'm going to call on Andy Sevilla to lead us in the pledges.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, sir. We have no presentations or proclamations. Before we move, or as we move into citizens' comments, I want to ask the city attorney to come forward and explain to the council and other, and the public, some, I don't know what, directive you have for us, advice you have for us regarding this item and announcements that we traditionally have on our agendas.
Good evening, council, mayor, city manager. Yes, recently, questions have been raised concerning the council's agenda and our practice in using announcements and public comments, those types of more general postings, and the specificity that we've been utilizing for the postings on those. And communities handle this differently, but in Texas, under the Open Meetings Act, open government laws, we are required to use as much specificity in the agenda postings as we have available to us at the time of posting the agenda. So, for example, occasionally, we have announcements, as we do this evening on the agenda, where we've identified, I believe, three specific announcements that we're going to have. Technically, in a hyper-technical way, we are prohibited from making other announcements on the agenda, and particularly if we were aware that these were items that were going to be coming before the council when the agenda was prepared, and for some reason, they just didn't make the agenda. The reason for this type of required specificity is because the Open Meetings Act wants to make our work as transparent as possible, and to give the public, when they see the agenda, advanced opportunity to recognize whether they want to attend our meetings and hear the work that the city council is doing. And if the speaker's identity and the subject matter of the topics to be discussed is not noted on the agenda, a casual reader won't have that notice and know whether they want to take the time out of their Tuesday evening to come hear the council do its work. This applies not only for announcements, but also, and in particularly, for public comments. So, for example, if the public comments are traditionally used for circumstances where the council is completely unaware of something that's going on in the community, and we have our comment cards, so someone can come up, identify themselves, and let the council know about an item that needs to be put on a council agenda for future discussion or action. And as you'll recall, the law requires that you're not allowed to comment on those or engage in an interactive discussion with them. You can set it for a future agenda, you can tell the staff to get out a publication or take some particular action, but you can't engage in an interactive discussion, nor can you take any action on something that's on the public comment. This is a, public comments are not required legally to be posted on the agenda at all. It's something that councils and governing bodies do as a courtesy, so that they can hear from their constituents about issues in the community that are important to the citizens, and give you an opportunity to put them on future agendas for discussion and possible action. They generally have no posting under them, because typically, they are things that you have no information about. So, for example, if a citizen wants to come let you know that there's a street light out at a particular intersection, and y'all aren't aware of it, they can come up, they can very quickly tell you to take a look into that, you can direct staff to do that, and that's what public comment is about. Or maybe they come to you and say, "Have you heard that? There's a new train track coming through town," or something. Please look into that and be prepared to take our best interest to heart and report to us. That's what public comment is for. When it's something that you know about, when it's an issue of true public interest or a project or a topic that's under discussion in the community that the council's aware of, an item that you've been working on, that's not the subject of public comment, that's more typically an agenda item. If, however, you hear in advance that someone wants to address the council in one of its meetings in a public comment way, and it's an appropriate thing for there not to be an interchange of information or discussion about, you can post that under public comment if you desire to do so, so long as they give you their name and the topic that they wish to be, to discuss in public comment with you in advance, and you identify that on the agenda. There's a couple of cases, Texas cases, including the Supreme Court decision and an Attorney General's decision, that I think speak to this best. The Attorney General's decision actually has a quote that I think sums it up well, and it says, "The Attorney General cautions that the use of the term 'public comment' on an agenda or a similar item will not provide adequate notice if the governmental body is prior to the meeting aware, or reasonably should have been aware, of specific topics to be raised." So, if, for example, a governmental body is apprised in advance that a member of a particular neighborhood association will be present to comment on drainage problems, it must ensure that its notice to the public is tailored to this prior knowledge. In other words, put the name of the commenter and the topic of the comment on the agenda. So, that tells you the type of specificity that the Attorney General recommends for public comments. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer that.
How do you define governmental body?
That's the city council, and it's any city board or commission. It's anyone that operates under the Open Governments Act.
So, did you tell me that if any city council member, any of the six of us, has a conversation with someone who identifies that they want to come speak on a specific topic, we need to let the mayor know that and tell that person, either the night they want to speak or in advance, that we would be happy to post it on the agenda?
Absolutely.
And that's, so it's not the governmental body, it's any member of the governmental body?
It's any member. The city, you are the city. The council is the city for purposes of notice on what's coming to the council for discussion. So, that's right. Each of you, if you hear from a citizen who says, "I want to come Tuesday night and talk to you about X, Y, Z," say, "That's, that's fine." It's not a matter of not wanting to hear from the public, because we do. It's simply a matter of transparency in letting the rest of the public know what's going to be taken up by the council, so that they can attend if they desire to do so. So, what you would do is someone contacts you and says, "I'd like to talk to the council about the drainage in such and such subdivision." You say, "Great, we invite you to do that. I'll get with the mayor, and we'll post this on the agenda. We look forward to having you there." And that's, that's the way it would be handled.
What if that comment comes to you after the agenda is posted? Do you advise the person to not come until the next meeting?
Yeah. What you'd say is, because of the Open Meetings Act, we need to, we'll need to see you then on the agenda that takes place on such and such a date. And it may frustratingly delay the conversation for a week or so, but the conversation can take place, it's just that we need to let the rest of the public know what will be discussed and when.
Okay, so, just a what-if, so you tell the person that they really can't talk about it until it's posted, and then they come that, that night, maybe the same day or the next day sometime, and they sign up to talk. Do we refuse to hear them?
I think what I would say is, you mentioned to me that you wanted to discuss this, and were anxious to hear this, but because of the Open Meetings laws requirement, we'll need to post this for an agenda, so that the rest of the community will know that we're discussing this.
Okay.
J.C., what if the person who's going to discuss it does not tell the council member, but the community tells the council member?
If then the person shows up to discuss it, then the council had notice of it. Remember that the AG says, "Or reasonably should have known." It says, "If the governmental body is prior to the meeting aware, or reasonably should have been aware." So, if you've heard it throughout the community, you reasonably should have been aware, I would still invite the person involved to feel free to appear at a properly posted agenda to make the comment.
So, that person would get in touch with the mayor or Mike to say they request for whatever it is to be on the agenda?
Right. And, you know, if it's an interactive discussion, obviously, it needs not to be public comment.
Right.
It needs to be an agenda item. The mayor, under our rules of procedure and charter, generally sets the agenda, but he does it with the assistance of the staff and the city manager, and often, council members request agenda items be posted as well. So, it will require all of you to communicate with the city manager, so that he can communicate with the mayor and ensure that the agendas are well posted.
Let me try a hypothetical with you. There's a lady that's been emailing me all weekend about the traffic problems on 71, and she thinks it's because the mayor is lazy and inept. And I've invited her to come tell the council that. Now, I've told you I'm lazy and inept, but, yeah, I don't know if she's here tonight or not, but if she were to sign up and tell us that, that would be okay. I mean, I haven't said anything to her, except we have a, we have a process. I have no idea that she's going to show up. I have no idea what she looks like. I'm not even sure she gave me her real name.
You don't have any way to know that this is an individual that really wants, sincerely wants to make a public comment of some time, of some type? If it's, you know, if it's an anonymous or an off-the-cuff remark, and you don't have a sincere belief that they're going to show up at a council member to make comments, then it may fall into the kind of, you weren't reasonably aware that they might appear at a public comment. If they did show up, and it was a topic that needed to be meaningfully discussed, in other words, you wanted to get information out about what's causing the traffic delay on 71, I would think that you would thank her for her comment and suggest that the city manager post an agenda item at the next meeting, so we could update the public on what was happening on 71. It's not that you can't take the topic that someone's concerned about, but instead of taking it up inappropriately for a one-sided discussion or no discussion at all, if it's something that the city needs to handle, turn it over to the staff, post it for the next meeting, and go for it.
I'm particularly concerned about the next hypothetical.
Okay.
So, she's out drinking on Friday night, and with a neighbor that I happen to know, and the neighbor calls and says, "Oh, this lady was popping off about what an idiot you are." I don't, I don't worry she's going to come down to city council and blast y'all. I mean, I don't think I'm going to take that as, so, if she swears out a, I mean, I'm, how are we going to draw that line, J.C.?
We're not always going to be able to draw it. I think you have to use common sense and your experience. You have to think about, you know, what's logically an important city matter that needs to be discussed. If she, if this hypothetical person turns up and wants to complain, you're the mayor, you're charged with coordinating the conduct of the meeting. If it's going to be a one-minute, you know, slap, that may be something you just let pass, or you may say, "Look, we don't control the, the traffic on 71, let's get the city manager to give us an update." You're going to have to use your discretion. But I wouldn't say that that kind of phone call or that kind of off-handed comment gives you reasonable notice about what would be.
Yeah, because I mean, I really don't think I'm lazy and inept, and I certainly don't think I'm responsible for the traffic on 71. But if that lady thinks that, I want her to have the opportunity to come here and tell everybody what jerk I am, you know?
Generally speaking, we try to be, I think this community tries to be very open to the conversation, but it does need to be done in a way that gives the entire community an opportunity to know the conversations taking place.
As much as possible.
That's the key. That's what the Open Meetings Act charges us to do, to let everyone in the community know the discussion has occurred, and we can only do that by posting it, so that people can read it and make up their own mind whether they want to be involved in the discussion.
So, am I correct that you gave us a communication, this council, a communication, after we had gotten the agenda posted? And so, there's no way to have this posted for conversation tonight, but it makes sense for me to post a conversation, so the council can talk about this with you and the citizens at our next meeting?
I'd be glad.
About how this whole thing works?
Sure, sure. I think there are procedures that other communities use, that once we all get used to it, will facilitate the agenda preparation, make it easier, so that people will know what's expected of them as far as timing is concerned, and make it easier on the council to make sure that they're meeting their constituents' needs.
Okay. Other council member questions? Kelly, you got something?
Excuse me. If a council member hears that someone wants to come and speak in front of citizens during the public comment section, and does not inform the mayor or city council, does that put the council at risk for violating the Open Meetings Act if that person's allowed to speak? So, should the councilperson, is it our responsibility to go to the mayor and the city manager and tell them?
Yes. You do need to pass that along, and that will probably be fleshed out once the council digests this information, and we talk a little bit about the process and the procedure that we think would be best for this community to use going forward.
So, if we hear something that's deemed fairly credible, we should immediately tell them, so that no one is at risk of violating it?
Sure, sure. And I would actually recommend that you pass it along to the city manager, so we don't have quorum issues, we don't have Daisy chain issues. We get it to the city manager, and he can take it up with the mayor when they're working on the agenda together.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Okay, you have something else, Kay?
No.
Willie.
Wouldn't this be the appropriate time to, with the people in the audience, to let them know when last day to post something, if they wanted to put something on?
Yeah, would that be okay to say that?
Sure.
You know, we work on a, we post these agendas as pretty much as late as we can, just so we can process everything possible. But we ask the staff, Anne, why don't you come up and tell us what our deadlines are for the staff and so forth, and what really works?
Good evening, council, mayor, city manager. For the record, my name is Anne Franklin, the city secretary. The deadline for staff is at noon on Wednesday. We ask for them to have their items and backup in. So, we start receiving items immediately after the council meeting ends, like tonight, tomorrow morning, we possibly could start receiving items, but the cutoff date and deadline is Wednesday at noon, the week before the council meeting.
Like five days before the council meeting?
Approximately.
No, four, six days, sorry, can't count. Yeah, six days. Okay. Thank you very much. Mayor Orr was always eloquent when we reach citizens' comments, in reminding us of his time in Saudi Arabia, a country in which freedom of speech was not allowed. He talked about this being the most important part of our meeting, perhaps, and in connection with the First Amendment and the freedom that we have in this country, and the privilege that we have to live in this country and to express ourselves, that this was a precious moment for him. And this infectious, I think, at least to me, so I call upon his thoughts and memory at that point, and express the same views. So, we now enter citizens' comments, and I have these in the order that I think they were received. First is Judith Hoover. Judy? There you go.
Mayor, I hate to do this, but I already know about this. Do you, do you intend to talk about what's on these signs?
I intend to talk about some of what's on the signs, I do.
Okay. What I know about is your dissatisfaction with Mike and J.C. and Melissa. I've heard that in advance from several people, that you were going to come tonight and talk about this, so, does this mean that, is this one of those examples, is this one of those examples that you're talking about?
Josie, I need you to use the mic, this is real important.
Yeah. I was thinking, it's, if you have some complaints, it would be worth an agenda item to talk about it, instead of citizen comments under what's just happened?
The mayor can take her comment and then decide whether or not he, a brief comment on a topic, and decide whether he wants to post it for an agenda, I suppose. If you knew about it in advance, and she knew about it in advance, it typically should have been posted, but...
I mean, Judy, I have to tell you, I didn't know, I heard you were organizing a march to come down here. I didn't know you were going to talk to us in citizens' comments. J.C., you got any advice for me? Appreciate your patience, Judy.
I don't have a lot.
I'm sorry.
You know I don't have a lot.
I appreciate your waiting until we figure this out.
I would suggest that if she would like to leave a topic with you, that if it parents something interactive, citizens' comments changed officially tonight.
Here's the thing, what's happening, Judy, is that you only have a chance to talk to us, and we won't have a chance to talk to you.
I'm aware of that. I read this and signed it, and I swore to it, that what I would say to you tonight is true and correct, to the best of my knowledge.
Yeah, I don't have any doubts about that. I know you, and I know that's true. What they're saying is that this should be an agenda item, so that there can be discussion about it, because it is an important matter.
The other alternative, the other alternative, I'm, I'll get you, Doc. The other alternative is, it's an item that we need to place on the agenda for the future after we hear from her. Doc?
My understanding of citizens' communication, and J.C., please help me with this, I mean, since Ms. Hoover, Judy, has signed up to speak, I mean, as long as she speaks and we do not comment on it, I mean, as we're going to go into a conversation as we're doing now, which I feel is almost in violation of what we should be doing, I think we should just go ahead and, if she signed up for citizens' communication, am I not right? She can speak, we just can't answer or reply to it.
But, Doc, that's the point.
I mean, we're discussing it, and that's just not what I thought we should be doing at this point.
Why did it change tonight?
Let me, let me, Judy, please.
I don't know, as far as I'm...
Let me try to, first time that we've done this, we've gotten some new advice, I'm struggling really hard to understand it and to make it work, and I appreciate the indulgence of the citizens and the council. J.C., you got something to say?
That is, Doc, you're correct. That's how it's been handled in the past, occasionally, when there's been a topic that's been known in advance, the topic has been posted, not always. What I'm telling you is that the Attorney General and the Supreme Court of Texas have held otherwise, and said that if it's a topic that is known in advance, it needs to be posted as the topic, and that only unknown topics.
When was that opinion handed down?
Well, I gotta tell you, Judy, I mean, I'm, let me say, I'm hosting this conversation for our next meeting, and I really hope you'll come down and ask those questions. But right now, the question is whether or not your signs are some kind of advance notice for the council. I'm not sure I understand why they are.
I, I don't take that they are advance notice. I think that she's welcome to make her three-minute, unanticipated comment to you.
Okay, that's, that's good.
But as far as an exchange or...
No, no, we're not going to do that. I understand that, but Judy...
Wait a minute, I'm all confused now.
If, if Ms. Hoover, unbeknownst to the people that were posting the agenda, at the time they posted the agenda, that would be the mayor and Mr. Talbot, at the time they posted the agenda, my understanding is that the mayor and Mr. Talbot didn't know that Ms. Hoover was coming to make whatever comment she's about to make. If they didn't know it at the time that the agenda was posted, it constitutes a public comment and can be made without the detail. If they knew it at that time, I think, this is when I was, I thought I said, if they knew it at the time the agenda was posted, the detail needs to be included. I'm not getting the feeling, you might have known it, Ms. McInally, but I'm not feeling like the others did. And so, I think she can make her public comment. I think also, that if the mayor feels like it's a matter of public interest, he can direct that it be carried forward to a future agenda for more in-depth discussion, so that you can ask questions and carry forth.
Great, great.
I think that's clear enough. Judy, I appreciate your waiting until we figure that out, so you're on.
Okay. First, I want to acknowledge that Ted Bauer had open heart surgery yesterday, and I have an update. He is still in ICU, and it's day by day. Our thoughts are certainly with him. He's a wonderful employee of the city. The first thing I want to do is read off of your website, that the city's work to preserve its historic character, promote heritage tourism, enhance the community, and extend its welcome to others in enjoying its offerings. I just want to make a statement, I don't agree with this, just for the record, I don't think that the city works to preserve its historic character. I think citizens who live in Bastrop and spend money doing that are the ones that preserve... preserve, have preserved the historic character, not the city of Bastrop. You also say on your website that the city achieves transparency by communicating with the residents. I'd like to give you each a copy of one of the communications that was received by one of your residents. May I hand these to you, Ken?
You got something to pass out? Yeah.
I do. I do. Thanks. It's a letter from a department head to one of our tenants threatening him with cease and desist, and we were not notified, and the department head indicated that our tenant was operating illegally on City Park property, and we in fact own that property. So this fellow's over at the Parks Department, and he's threatening one of our tenants, saying that he's operating on City Park property. It was our property, we own the property. So that's not exactly communicating with residents. I want to make you all aware that I've done some research about what city attorneys are paid. Bastrop with eight thousand. Last year paid J.C. three hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety-nine cents. The city of Elgin with nine thousand people paid in their, in their budget, it's not that they paid, but they budget fifty thousand. Smithfield budgets forty-five hundred, they have four thousand people. LaGrange has five thousand people and they budgeted forty-eight thousand for this year. Giddings has five thousand people and they budgeted thirty-five thousand. Lampasses, Texas, has seven thousand people and they budgeted thirty thousand. I find it interesting. Then I just want to say, without going into all the detail of our project at thirteen oh five Wilson, we obtained permits, we paid for permits all along the way. We received an illegal stop work order last November, the day before Thanksgiving. The work order says contact this office within forty-eight hours. When we did that, that Monday after Thanksgiving, for four days, we could not get any city staff to speak to us. My husband sat outside Mike Talbot's office for two and a half hours on Monday, and Mike walked out and said, "You can sit there all day long, I'm not talking to you."
I need you to wrap it up.
Okay, so the wrap-up is, we're through all that. We've been in court for ten solid months on criminal charges that Melissa McCollum filed on Tommy for working without a permit. That case lacked prosecution. The district attorney said he would not prosecute because there was no evidence, and in fact, we had a permit to build, a building permit. So that happened to us. There's a similar situation going on with Ms. Van Diver on Jefferson and Farm. You don't have all the information because you're shielded because it's constantly potential or pending litigation. I would encourage you to listen to this woman. It is a terrific injustice. For eighteen months, she has been shut down. You need to get the facts. You do not need to listen to what staff is saying and what your city attorney's telling you. It is a terrific injustice. Listen to Ms. Van Diver. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Chris Rubio, and I'm here, and I'm going to speak to Ms. Van Diver's issues. This is basically a letter that I sent to Mike Talbot. I did not receive a letter back from him until recently, when he said, "See the attorney." I didn't want to talk to him. So I'm here today, and I want to let you know that the lawsuit that the city has filed against the property owners at nine oh nine Farm Street is filed on the wrong basis. The allegations made by the city that the property owners were told on the day that the application was submitted by Ms. Van Diver, that the addition or the sunroom was not in compliance, and that the setbacks that were, the variance that was approved did not apply to that particular part of the plan. That is a false allegation. The plat shows the bonded lines. Not only was I the person who submitted the application for building, not Ms. Van Diver, I was also the job superintendent for overseeing all the construction, and I would never have broken ground on any project if the plat had not been approved and if the permit had not been issued by the planning and development department. The city's copy of the application has a notation on it now that says NIC and several things that look to be added after the fact. They were never told to me. My copies don't have any of those notations. My name was on the application, my address, my phone number was on the application. Why wasn't I informed at the time during the eight months of construction that we were in violation, that we didn't have a permit? Why wasn't I informed? Why weren't the property owners informed? Instead, they issued the permit and we began construction. I was there during every phase, from the pouring of the concrete, everything that went on, all the way up to the framing, and we did this for eight months. The city inspector performed inspections as per the law, and I was there on different occasions when he was there. Never once did he allude to the fact that we might be working without a permit or that we were in any code violation. Not one word. I was there. Nothing ever was told to me, and I've got to ask why. That property on Wilson, I mean, on Farm and Jefferson, sat vacant for many, many years in a dilapidated state where homeless people slept, drug dealers met, the teens gathered after school, and it just sat right there across from one of the B.I.S.D. properties. And now the only attempt to clear that up and make it less than an eyesore, beautify what this city says they want to beautify our city, they stopped it eight months after construction started. Why wait? Why did they do this? And you know, I will repeat what Judy said, that the city said that they will always try to be a good neighbor and provide transparency and tell the truth. I don't believe it. I believe that they are doing things that are not proper, and I have nothing to gain by my appearance here tonight. I don't have a dog in this hunt. I'm just doing what I feel is right, and there is injustice being dished out to the property owners in this town for some unknown reason or hidden agenda, and I think it is ridiculous.
I need you...
The city needs to, the city needs not expect builders and developers to come here and build if the city manager and their staff cannot even honor their own codes and contracts that they themselves put in place. Thank you.
Thank you. You gotta take a pause until the train goes by. Oh, he's gone by and I missed it. There you go. Inept and lazy. Sarah McKenna. Okay. Joseph Beal.
Mayor, council members, my name is Joseph Beal. I'm a bit confused about what I can talk about tonight. I prepared a statement that I am prepared to read tonight that addresses the comments that council members McInally and Gilliland made at the last council meeting. I called both Kelly and Kay this morning to tell them that I was going to make this presentation because I wanted to give them the courtesy of knowing that I was going to come here tonight. So both of them knew that I was going to come tonight and talk about the comments that they made at the last council meeting. And I'm prepared to read that presentation into the record or not. I don't know if I'm allowed to.
Let me tell you, Kelly called me today and told me that she had talked to you and about, or you had called her about that subject. And following what J.C. is recommending to us tonight, I'm gonna have to ask you to not talk about it, and instead to, what I'll do is place this item on the agenda for the next meeting and help you in any way I can for you to communicate with us. But I think that given J.C.'s ruling tonight, until we settle it any better, I'm gonna have to ask you not to speak on that subject.
Okay. I do not want the item placed on the agenda for the next meeting or any other meeting. I don't want to have a discussion about what was said. I do want to address the council tonight about freedom of speech.
That's fine. So we'll, um... Well, that's certainly not anything that anybody knows about that I know of, so please proceed, and we'll start the clock right now.
I prepared a statement to read into the record during citizen comments tonight. The statement was about two things. One, setting the record straight and providing the truth after council members Gilliland and McInally lied about me and slandered me at the last meeting when I was voted on to the B.E.D.C.
Excuse me, mayor.
I must, Joe, I think to characterize slander at this point and to, it sounds like you're going into what you were gonna talk about. I don't mind talking about freedom of speech, but could you put it in some other terms?
Yes, I'll, I'm gonna quickly get to freedom of speech. The other part of what my prepared comments were about was to demand that council members Gilliland and McInally...
I mean, I really need you not to do that, Joe. I would appreciate it if you talked about freedom of speech and the principle of it, or whether we're exercising freedom of speech up here, anything like that, but the topic of following up on the two council members, which is what I understand you told Kelly and Kay you wanted to talk to them about, is, carded, what J.C. has told us is something we need to post for another meeting, and I can't do it tonight.
Okay, then I will leave the presentation with the city secretary so you all can look at it if you want to. That is what I was going to talk about tonight. Now I'm being told that I cannot speak about that tonight because I had the courtesy to call council members Gilliland and McInally this morning and tell them I intended to give this presentation. This is wrong. I spent a year in the jungles of Vietnam to protect our freedom, including the freedom If you interpret this Attorney General's opinion in such a way that you're able to keep citizens from speaking their mind to this council, even if you don't want to hear what they have to say, then we are starting down a dangerous path in Bastrop, Texas.
Let me, it's cutting into Joe's time and anybody else's. I appreciate the applause for people, I don't know how to express that, but I, you know, just hope we can just get through our conversations, so keep going.
I'm done, thank you, mayor.
I'd like to ask J.C. a question. J.C., is, is the Attorney General saying something that says that we are...
I gotta say, we, we've talked about this, we're in citizens' comments, we're gonna post it for next week, so I appreciate you to wait till then.
He said he didn't want it posted.
Yeah.
I'm posting the subject of how we do this process, and...
Wait a, wait a second, we're talking about freedom of speech here. We don't have freedom of speech...
We're doing citizens' comments and we're not responding. Now, am I missing something, J.C.?
Mayor, the only thing I would add is that if no one was aware that Mr. Bill wanted to address the council until today, that falls within, that was not within the time agenda was being prepared.
Well, that's something new. You wanna, so you're saying anybody that says to a council member on Saturday before a Tuesday meeting, it's okay for them to speak?
After posting.
After posting.
If you don't know about it during the time that it's, that the posting is being done, it does not have to be identified on the citizens' comments.
Joe, would you wait, would you wait a minute? So you're saying...
I'm saying if...
Kelly informed me after we had posted the meeting, so I think, it sounds to me like Joe can talk.
Joe can talk because it was a matter of surprise, not a, but if it's a matter that needs to be posted for a future meeting, that's where your discretion needs to come into play.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry that I misunderstood the two or three conversations we've had, J.C., because I thought you told me that any time that a council member had knowledge of what somebody was gonna talk about on citizens' comments, they couldn't talk about it. You said that tonight, but you didn't say that to me three times when we've talked. So is that your final word on this?
I'm sorry, mayor. If someone comes to you before the agenda is prepared and you know that an item is coming, you need to, you need to post it. If someone comes after the fact and surprises you with a comment, you can take the comment and then post it for a future meeting. That's what I'm suggesting.
Okay, Joe, would you come up, would you, would you help me correct the error that I had in understanding what J.C. wanted, and come up and make your, make your comments?
Mayor, I would ask that this be posted for an agenda item because Mr. Beal has already said that he is going to accuse Ms. McInally and I of lying, and if he stands up there and it's a one-sided conversation, then we have no response to any of that. He had an opportunity to discuss this at an open meeting when he was appointed, and he did not take that opportunity, so I would like this to be an open agenda, agenda item on the next meeting.
I appreciate, I appreciate your comments. I don't know what to do except follow the advice of, of the city attorney, and she's telling me that Joe can talk, and I'm gonna call on him.
I'm not, excuse me, mayor, I am not disputing that Mr. Beal can talk. He did not, he did not inform us he was gonna speak before the agenda was posted, and he seems to fall within those rules. But I am saying that I am asking you personally to put this on the agenda because Ms. McInally and I have just been called liars, and we will not have a chance to even discuss the item with Mr. Beal unless it's an agenda item.
I would say in our process, one of the things that we can do, once we've heard citizen comments and finished a council meeting, anybody can talk to me about posting an item on the next agenda.
I'm talking to you about it right now. Joe doesn't want to post it on the next agenda.
This is, this is citizens' comments, it's not posting agendas. You can talk to Mike about it when he gets to his turn.
So in other words, what Joe's accusing us of doing, we're going to sit here and Joe's going to do it to us.
I don't know what Joe's doing, he said Joe wants to read a statement, and I'm gonna give him the freedom to read the statement.
It is citizens' communication. The mayor has recognized the speaker and his parliamentarian. I would like for us to proceed.
Thank you.
Do it.
I will say before I begin that I was not here at the meeting two weeks ago because I had no idea of the attack that was gonna be made. If I had known that, I certainly would have been here. I was extremely disappointed when I heard the remarks of city council members Gilliland and McInally at the November twenty-fourth council meeting. Council members may have their differences on issues, and they have the right, indeed the obligation, to vote their conscience. How they cast their votes and how council members Gilliland and McInally presented themselves at the last council meeting is the key question I speak to tonight. By their tone, by their arrogant and quite frankly inaccurate and slanderous words, they exemplified what is wrong with the entire political system.
Would you qualify that, Joe? I mean, in your opinion, can you say that? Because I don't want to, I'm, I'm just not sure that you're accusing one of us, okay. I want to try to keep the decorum of this council meeting, and I think we have some decorum rules, so I want to, I don't want to slip over the edge on that, Joe.
May I continue?
Yeah, please.
Politicians who disregard civility and ignore the facts to... Politicians who disregard civility and ignore the facts to advance their own personal agenda in future elections are an embarrassment to this city. I've been in public service, I've been in public service for over 25 years and am glad to compare my record of ethics in government service with theirs at any time. In fact, as chairman of the Texas State Board of Professional Engineers, I helped strengthen state law on the subject of ethics reform for my licensed profession and implemented a program for all Texas colleges with accredited engineering programs to include ethics class as mandatory. As a council member, I did not violate either the spirit or the letter of our ethics ordinance. I am not the co-chair of the Arc Guild Steering Committee. I am a member of the Steering Committee called together for the sole purpose of advising the guild on its fundraising campaign. When I spoke in favor of funding for the Arc Center project, I did so as any other council member speaking on behalf of any other civic organization requesting funds. As a council member, I did not advocate or advance any proposal to sell any of the water owned by the city of Bastrop, nor did I advocate the sale of any of the city of Bastrop's future water supply. Indeed, if my ideas had been followed, the city of Bastrop might well have additional supplies online today. Any work I did as a consultant was targeted to water supplies outside of the city and well beyond the scope of any resources sought after by the city. To intentionally claim or erroneously or irresponsibly parrot any such notion is to tell a lie and in doing so, to hurt my character. Council members, you are not here to personally judge, you are not here to intentionally slander, you are here to serve and to serve with dignity and civility. I'm not going to respond any further to your political grandstanding and I do not know what agenda you're trying to advance. However, I am honored to serve on the board of the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation and can assure you that as always, my only agenda is the future success of our city.
Joe, I need you to wind it up.
Thank you to those who put their trust in me despite this attack. I appreciate your support and the support of the community in allowing me to be of service. Good evening.
I'm sorry, could you come a little closer to the mic? Maybe raise it up. I don't want you to have it a little bit over, but you maybe raise it a little higher.
I think we're good.
There we go, that's good, thank you.
Yeah, I can be louder.
Talk a little louder, it'll help. We're on television, so...
I've known Joe Beal a long time. I didn't come here tonight to defend Joe Beal, but I know him as an honorable person. And anybody in this community that makes a statement like is purported to have been made, has no business in any type of government position anywhere. He nearly gave his life for this country. I did the same thing. And I look around today at how things are being done and I know how my father, who fought with George Patton in World War II, when he got back, how he felt. You guys have gotta start acting like normal people. Y'all aren't God descended down on the city of Bastrop. Everybody here oughta have their voice, say anything they want to, it's just council meeting. I'm, I'm, I will come back and talk about the other subject that I want to talk about, but what happened in Mr. Beal's case is slanderous at the very least. Thank you.
Bonnie Coffey.
Wow, this'll be different.
Bonnie, you might bring that down a little bit, yeah, thanks.
I can't help it if I'm short.
No, you're perfect, it's designed for all sizes.
I know I have a time limit and I chose my words well, so we'll read my comments so I don't miss anything. I am among the many who were amazed at the election of Joe Beal to the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation Board at the last city council meeting. Thank you, council members Gilliland and McInally for speaking up, you are both appreciated. I'm not alone in these concerns, I've spoken with a lot of people, I'm just the one that showed up this evening. As someone who worked for a city-county agency in the Department of the Mayor and for over four different mayors, I know what good city council work looks like. You weren't there on this issue. I think one of the responsibilities of regular old citizens is to be a sort of mirror for elected officials, letting you know how your actions seem and look to those of us who are in the audience and in the community. There are three parts to my amazement. Amazement number one, I attended most of the city council meetings at which this body chastised then-council member Joe Beal for his involvement and comments concerning the water issue. I watched this body unanimously pass a resolution intended to clarify the city's stand on water in response to what Mr. Beal had said to others outside the community. It just seems to me that if I can't trust what elected and appointed individuals are saying to others about our community and its plans, I'm not gonna place a lot of trust in them. Amazement number two, in my years of working for a city-county department, working with, reporting to the mayor, I am not a stranger to the requirements and expectations of public service. There is such a thing as the hint or perception of impropriety. Citizens expect their elected officials to be as clear and transparent as possible when conducting their business and in running their government. It's about being above reproach. According to Cody and Lynn in their publication Honest Government and Ethics Guide to Public Service, the litmus test for a public official should be to gauge their decisions on how he or she would interpret public scrutiny. If it would be viewed as a problem, they should refrain from the action in question. The action and election of Mr. Beal didn't meet the smell test. It smacks of backdoor politics and cronyism and the good old boy network and doing business as usual. Bastrop citizens want this community to grow and thrive. That can't happen when the doors of government are closed to new blood, new ideas, and diversity. It's true, if you always do what you've always done, you'll always get what you've always gotten. The mayor has effectively placed four city council members, Mr. Beal retired just six months ago, on the board of B E D C. B E D C has seven members. I'm a little uncomfortable with the degree of majority control by city council that now exists. The council meets regularly in closed-door sessions at which no one out here knows what you discuss. At a fairly recent city council meeting at which that issue was discussed, the majority of you didn't seem to think anything was wrong with that. Again, perception. You already have three city council members who attend these sessions and who can then go to B E D C with whatever knowledge you gained. You now have another who has had privies to these discussions up until six months ago. That seems a bit lopsided to me. Perception is everything. And amazement number three, Mayor, I am especially astonished by you. When you were elected, I sent you a congratulatory email and then urged you to address the longevity and lack of diversity that existed on the B E D C board. At that time, the majority of members of B E D C had served multiple appointments ranging from 14 to 19 years each. There wasn't a chance to add new blood or new ideas or new perspectives. I encouraged you to consider making sure the same people weren't appointed multiple times and to include diversity in regards to appointments, including a range of experience and expertise, gender, ethnicity, race, as an opportunity to create a sense of change and progress for this community. I was pretty excited when you appointed two new members to B E D C and look forward to a more inclusive attitude. But we're back to the same old, same old with the appointments of Mr. Beal, we're back to a predominantly all-white male board. I'm disappointed with your disregard for the creation of a better Bastrop by being inclusive and totally above board. I don't want to live in a land of recycled politicians. This city council had a chance to do better by Bastrop. I expected better of this city council, much, much better.
Thank you. That's, that's all that we have on citizens' comments. We move to, we have three posted announcements and we will not have any others following the advice of council. First is Doc or Kay, update on the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee.
I've got nothing to say.
Doc?
Mine remains, bless you. Mine remains the same. I mean, we have not had another meeting of the Comprehensive, of the Comprehensive Plan or Steering Committee since we met, so there will be updates as soon as we take some more action.
Thank you. I have asked, again, we're clarifying a lot of things on advice of our council and I've asked Ann Franklin to provide some clarifications of some rules that I think we've discovered that we didn't know about and how we're gonna proceed in the future. Our city secretary, Ann Franklin.
Mayor, council, and city manager, during the appointments of the board and commission members at the November 24th council meeting, it was brought to our attention that there's an expectation of vacancies on the boards and commissions for the city of Bastrop will be posted outside of City Hall. This expectation derives from Section 1.04001 of the City Code, which states, "At the direction of the mayor, the city secretary will post notices at City Hall as vacancies in established places or new places become available for appointment to city advisory bodies." This was, this was not, this has not been a practice of the council in the past and neither the mayor or the staff was aware of this, this provision in the code. So we appreciate having this inadvertent oversight pointed out. So going forward, the mayor, city manager, city attorney, and city secretary have agreed that the list of vacant board and commission places will be posted outside of City Hall and the list will be updated as vacancies are filled or vacancies in established places or new places become available for appointment to city advisory bodies. As new applications for board and commissions come into the office of the city secretary, copies will be provided to the mayor and each council member. And the original will be placed in a master notebook in my office for future consideration for filling vacancies. So that's, that's how, that's the process going forward.
And we'll also keep that updated on the list of commissions, committees, and boards on the website. If there's a vacancy, we'll list that as vacant.
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't mention that. It will be updated on the web as well, on the web outside City Hall. Those two places will be updated. As often as we get the information, it will be placed in those places.
All right, I appreciate your, the folks that found this out to us and your response to, to that, so that we could talk about it and immediately make these changes. Anybody, let me start with Willie.
So let me see if I understand this. So tonight, somebody resigned from any board, say we had a meeting in two weeks. So she'd put, you'd post this on the website or on the bulletin board outside the office and we had a vacancy on, on a board. So would you, would then, from that point forward, till you filled it, would you just take new applications or would you go back to the ones that we had in April that people turned in?
I would be, myself, I'd be inclined to keep that file going unless somebody withdraws. We've had people withdraw applications and if they don't, we'll leave them in there and use those to consider. So the question then becomes, I think, and, you know, most of the time we do these things in May, and we did know last year, even though we haven't done it the previous five or six years at least, we did know we were supposed to do something in April. So that'll be the big time. We'll make sure we send everything we have out in April, Ann, that makes sense, doesn't it?
Yes.
But as we go forward with new applications and new vacancies, we'll give you the new ones. But if you ever want the whole shoot match, then let us know, we can, you know, we can provide that.
I just, I just want to make sure because, I mean, what you do with the applications is what you bring forward is your call, so I mean, we're not, we're not...
Well, I'll only post in the appointment that one, but you need to have access to all of them and give me advice, you know, if, if, I don't know how far it goes with how often, how many people can talk to me, we'll have to figure that out, but we can always, you know, talk about it. So Kelly?
Can I make a suggestion, Ann? On the back of the, on the second page of the application, it lists all the boards and the people check which ones they'd be interested in serving on. Could you, like, keep a spreadsheet or something that shows all the boards that they checked? So when a vacancy comes up on a, you know, the planning and zoning board, everybody who's checked that box that wants to be on planning and zoning is, is brought to the forefront so that the mayor can see who's checked that box?
Sure, absolutely.
Kay, are you wanting to speak? I see your mic.
No, no, I have just...
Your mic light on, okay. Garrett?
I would, along with the line, but Kelly was saying I would even go one step further. I noticed we had an application in Hackett today and the applicant put number 1, 2, 3, 4, kind of the order in which he would prefer to be on board. It would be good if we could revise that section and tell people to put numbers if there are more than one, put a box big enough to put a number in and they can put 1, 2, 3, 4, whatever in the box, and then we'll kind of know what their interests are, that would be helpful to us.
Sure, I'll, I'll make sure that we inform them or ask them to list the order in which they would like to be.
Great, thank you.
Can I ask one more thing, Ken?
Doc, did you have something? Okay, Kelly?
As part of the application, are we now sending out the ethics checklist form or is that just when the mayor decides to appoint somebody, you send it out? How does it work?
No, actually, when an application goes out, that form goes with it.
So this application that came in did not have an ethics form probably, or?
Right, that, that application, we just got the forms in and so if I know that they are, if they come to the office to pick up a form, I have the opportunity to give them the form with it. I'll talk to Mike and I'll get with Andreas about putting it on, online with the applications.
It seems like it would be easier if you gave it to him at the beginning rather than trying to collect the information later.
Absolutely, if we can connect the two together, because at this time, people aren't aware that that is required with the application, so we need to get that information out there.
Thank you. We, well, we're, I know, and I'm a tennis player and whenever you find out you're serving in the wrong court or something, you always change, you don't change the score, but you change from that moment forward, and that's what we're doing here. We have just discovered these things and I'm glad that we have and we're gonna follow them. It's not just April anymore, it's all year. I failed to put my name on I M C, but this is for me. We have a council position on the Clean Air Coalition, which is a volunteer organization of communities within the Austin region, has to be a city official, I mean, a city council member to serve on that board. Gary has been serving and his term is up in December, and so I'm inviting anyone to let me know if they're interested in serving on that, on that board. I thought for a while it could be just a citizen, it turns out it has to be a council member. So if anybody's interested, please let me know. City managers, informational report.
I will touch on just a few items and then, the first item is item B. At the last Tuesday night's workshop, I presented the council preliminary draft deal points regarding wastewater treatment plant number three. I know we went through a lot of information. We did meet with the developer this afternoon, had a very good discussion. From a conceptual standpoint, I think we're all on the same page that the developer will be required to pay their pro rata share of the impact that they will have on the plant. So I, conceptually, I don't think there's any difference of opinion on that. And a few additional items were, were brought up, such as there is area outside the mud that we may have to serve... such as there is area outside the mud that we may have to serve because of our CCN and how the utility district fits in between that. And so, we would want to amend the deal points to include us an opportunity to provide sewer to an area and not at a future date have to put, like, a parallel line or something like that. Other than that, it's filling in the blanks that were left. I anticipate having those on or before the Christmas break, and then plugging in the size of the pipes, pro rata shares, and things of that nature. And I think once I plug those in, the council will get a better grasp of what we're trying to accomplish. So, I'm still open to comments, but I think our meeting today was very productive, and I'm just waiting for the report from the engineers so I can fill in those blanks that you as well had questions. The next item is...
Willie, were you trying to ask a question on this?
I'm sorry. You said you were going to bring it back next January, or?
I will probably send you something out over the holidays once I get the numbers and sizes of the transmission mains put in, so that you have it well in advance of our first meeting, so that we can discuss it.
When are you going to need a final answer, a yes, a no?
In talking with the developer, because they have financial commitments they have to make, I would say preliminary, based upon our discussion this afternoon, end of January, middle of February, to keep us on that timeline. And so, that's what we're looking at.
Good, thank you.
You bet. The next item is the annual planning retreat, and everyone has agreed to reschedule it to the 23rd in light of the unexpected conflict that the Mayor had come up. So, the retreat will now be on January 23rd, as scheduled.
At 9:00 AM?
We have not set a time yet, so...
But it'll be, where will it be?
The Hyatt.
So, we'll give the citizens plenty of opportunity to know when that's going to take place?
Yes.
I mean, where, exact time. Thank you.
Okay. Item B is, City Engineer Wes and I met with Roy Dill, the area engineer, to discuss the proposed provisions to the original schematic layout of the State Highway 71 corridor, specifically in the vicinity of the Union Pacific Railroad and the eastbound portion of State 71. The first drawing you see is the original design, and it called for an at-grade crossing on the south side. They, after doing some value engineering, you will still be able to get off at the access ramp and maintain getting on the service road. But to get to the other side, you'll have to either move over and then go under and then come back around. Because of the difficulties of the at-grade crossing, the Gilz Branch crossing, this is something they've talked about for two years. This is what they were going to do, but after the first of the year, Mr. Dill will be having a public hearing to receive public comments, and I just wanted the council to be apprised, this is the design they're going with. In light of all the issues they have to deal with to make that work, both Wes and I are of the opinion this is the best that Tech Dot could come up with.
On that subject, Mike, can I extend that to the whole 71 corridor?
Yes, sir.
As I mentioned earlier, there's a lady who lives at Tahitian that seems to think that the city somehow is responsible for the bad traffic on 71. Have we done, I told her we have repeatedly talked to the Highway Department, we're in touch with them, that the traffic control is mostly DPS and the county, and that we've done everything we can to try to mitigate that, including warning the public and so forth, and also taking the overflow that comes through our city streets. Am I, was I correct in saying that?
Yes, sir. In fact, we were anticipating a high level of traffic during the Thanksgiving holiday, and the chief approached Tech Dot with the request to, if traffic got really bad, to allow the Police Department to manually control the traffic signals. And Tech Dot denied that request.
So, we could, if they had asked us, we could have helped, and we were willing to help.
Yes, sir.
But we're not permitted to because they control it.
They control it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Did they give a...
They didn't think the traffic was going to be that bad.
Sorry.
I understand, sir. I was out there that afternoon. Right, I agree.
For the Mayor, please. That's true.
The next item is Item K regarding, an update regarding the creation of a destination marketing organization. This is something that has been discussed back and forth with the council. You, I got a strong feeling last council meeting that you were looking for to a recommendation from me, and so I laid it out for you tonight. And so, I solicit your input.
Can you maybe wait and hear from the Hyatt first before we discuss this?
Yes, I think that probably would be a good idea because part of the, one of our recommendations is to work closely with them as we do all this.
I think that there's, I tend to agree with Kelly. Appreciate what you laid out as a starting point, and we need some starting points. But it's all so complicated and so tied together. I think we're going to have to start with one thing, see how the others fit in, and move ahead. And so, we've started with the Bastrop Marketing Corporation, which we'll do tonight, and I think, see how that goes, see if the other things fit in. We'll keep posting these items. I'm intended to do this as frequently as we can to keep the ball rolling.
Can we come back to Mike's item, though, after we hear from the Hyatt and see how the two mesh together?
I believe that's...
Is that okay?
Doc, is that okay? Yeah, I believe that's fine, because it's on the agenda, and we can make it out of order if we need to. So, Mike?
That's all I've got to cover, unless you have anything else that was in my report. It'll be the last one for 2015, so now's time to give it.
I want to comment, we've already had one suggestion, and I don't want to call him Kelly in a second, but one of the things that we did at, as the newly formed Bastrop Economic Development Corporation Board is working through, I think it's one of the things we discovered was at the end of our meetings, where we don't have it at the front, we have it at the end of our meetings, where we can talk about items that we want to have for agenda and so forth in the future. We've had, my last meeting or two meetings ago, we had a really lively conversation about what we need to lay out and gave it to the Chairman and to our Executive Director. They're kind of working that in, but it was really helpful for us, I think, to stop and think about what may be coming up while the hour is hot, so to speak. So, I think this is always going to be an important moment. If you've got something on your mind that you want to advise Mike and me to put on the agenda, this is a great time to do it. So, Kelly, do you want to repeat what you said earlier at this point?
Yeah, I guess so. I mean, we, I'm disappointed that Mr. Beal used the citizens' comments to try to discuss, have a one-sided discussion, and we couldn't respond back. But I don't know that we're gaining anything else by revisiting it, especially if he doesn't want to participate.
Yeah, I'm not trying to make you...
So, I don't know if we should add this to the agenda or not.
Okay, well, think about it. I just wanted to refer back to them because I cut you off in the middle of the other.
No, that's okay.
Okay, so, any, Garrett?
Yeah, I would like for the City Manager to consider either an agenda item. Well, I think we should probably prepare it as an agenda item because I think maybe the way to approach this is a resolution, and that is, I think we need to get Tech Dot here at one of our meetings to discuss traffic on 71. I hear about this every day, and I throw my hands up and say, well, that's not the city's responsibility. But I think we need to show the citizens of Bastrop that we are concerned about it, that we ought to have a representative of Tech Dot here who can hear from the people in Bastrop what they experience, and actually, even more than that, they're not going to be here, but the people from Houston and all these other towns that pass through here that are frustrated every Friday and every Sunday, and now pretty much every day because Tahitian gets backed up and 95 gets backed up every single evening as going eastward. And I personally observe it every day because I, office right there are in that stretch along 71, and I see that the traffic going eastward stops for five to 10 minutes, the traffic going westward, 30 seconds. There is something wrong with their computer in my mind. I'm an engineer, and I look at this and say, come on, I could manually program this thing better than their computers, and I'd like to, I'd like to be able to address directly somebody who can speak from the Tech Dot side of the deal.
Let me ask Mike this question. Mike, you know, the council knows that I started inviting some of our partners to come this summer, and we kind of ran out. I'm still waiting on the LCR agent or manager to come, but I should have thought of Tech Dot. So, I think maybe it fits there, although if there's a need for a resolution, maybe we better put it on the agenda. But I could do it as a partnership and just make it a friendly conversation, or we could always come back with a resolution or something.
I think if we start with the discussion, and then if we need to strengthen that discussion, we can turn it into a resolution.
I want to properly post it, so I'll probably place it as the agenda item for Tech Dot to give you an update on where things are at and how they see the traffic issues out there, and for you to ask them questions. And they may say, well, let's get back to you on that, and then we'll see where we go from there.
Does that sound good?
Sir, I'm like you think they are, Gary. You think this room is going to be big enough to invite people to a meeting?
Well, we can, you got a key to the room across the street, Mike?
Well, we had the last, been having the last Tech Dot meetings across the street.
We, yeah, the chamber's done their updates over at the Convention Center with Tech Dot on the status of the projects out on 71. For example...
Well, I mean, do what you think you need to do. If this room worked, do it.
Okay, then we'll...
Mayor?
Doc? If we're going to go that extreme, I think, I mean, not extreme, because it is an issue that's very important, but if we're going to do that, I think it needs to be, not during a regular council meeting, so that we can go ahead and book the Convention Center and go ahead and have a special meeting just with that one single topic. I mean, I don't think...
No, we're talking about an item on the agenda, but this is, so, the question then is, so, the question for Mike, I think, is how urgent is this? Because we're, I don't know what we're loaded up with in January on meetings, but how, you know...
You've got, you've got...
I got...
Here's what I, well, you've got Christmas coming up. I would like for you to take that issue, to say, we want you here, and maybe that will get their attention, and they'll say, well, gee, if we're going to have to show up, maybe we should do something before Christmas and show them that we care. You know, I'd like to see some action before our next, you know, our next meeting or the meeting after that. I want to see some action happen quickly. So, even if they can't show up for a couple of meetings, let them know that we've called them to the table, and we want to see some action.
Well, please give Mike your thoughts about...
A question.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Kelly.
If we do this as an agenda item, is there a way to post it so that citizens can also ask questions and not just council members?
Yeah, it'd be like any of our, I mean, citizens' comments, helping us that it's not on the agenda. Anybody can sign up for anything on the agenda. Yeah, anybody else have an opinion?
I agree.
Sounds, Mike, we need to have a special meeting.
I got it, and I also got the message at the beginning in the morning.
And probably across the street.
Okay.
Other, thank you, Gary, any other items that we want to talk to Mike about, place on the agenda?
Mayor?
Yeah, Doc?
Sorry, let's, let me just, let me rephrase. Before we leave this traffic situation, perhaps have them come as a speaker during the partnership time and speak to us, and then have that special meeting as a follow-up to it. That way, we can address what council membership is asking about, something happening quickly. But then we can go into more detail, and we have a separate meeting across the street at the Convention Center.
Mike, still listening for advice? So, why don't we go back to first round, we'll do partnership. We can talk to them. Just be a presentation, and we can ask them some questions, declare from the presentation. We'll go from there to figure out what we ought to do about a bigger meeting. Is that okay? Does that make sense, Mike? Do you think you have what you're...
Yes.
Doc?
Yeah, we just need to make sure that we follow that and make sure that it is just a presentation and not ask questions and go forward with from there.
Yeah, can we post it that way, JC? JC knows how to do that.
I'm sure that that's the right way to do it, though, because you just said anybody could sign up in citizens' comments to ask questions. Are you trying to avoid that because it's going to be too lengthy, or?
I'd say only on the first round, but our intention will be to have an open forum kind of meeting where, you know, we'll get a relationship established, because we don't have a relationship. Mike's got the relationship, but we'll establish a relationship, what I'm following. Hear some things from them, we give some give and take. That will help us form the agenda and the questions and so forth for a meeting at which we'll expect everybody that wants to come to come and fill up the Convention Center if necessary. Now, that's sort of what I'm following from what Doc's saying. And but also, if it's, if it's, it seems to me that when we have the intention to ask everybody, we're trying to build the agenda, it kind of makes sense that we just have a conversation with them. If there's something wrong with that, we can do something else.
I think, I think it's a better approach, more professional, I would say, is for them to come make a presentation, counsel to express your concerns, and then ask that we schedule a public hearing update for the citizens to address. That way, they know what some of the issues are, they can better prepare for them, and they're not caught cold turkey.
Are you saying, though, that citizens, you're trying to avoid a lot of citizen comments at that particular... So, are you going to post it so that, please, hold your citizen comments till the meeting, or?
It's going to be, if I understand correctly, it's going to be under presentation. And my view of the presentation is, I'm going to ask them to give the council an update on the projects because, for example, they're off for bid right now for 95 and 71. So, by after the first of the year, those bids should be in, and we shouldn't want to know when the construction is, if it's still going to be on schedule for commencing in March. And as I put in my report, we're still on schedule with Tahitian, and what do they see happening with one transitioning to a closure but will not be finished before the 7195 opens and begins construction. And thirdly, what I presented to you tonight is still in the drafting stage. Since the design has changed, they've got to go back to public hearing and take public comment, and that project has not, that phase, the Phase Three, which puts the service roads all the way from 95 across the river, are being designed but has not been funded. But in my discussions with Mr. Dill, he said, I could get a letter tomorrow saying it's funded. And a lot of that is brought about by the demand of traffic coming through here, wanting to get through the city. And I think with that kind of an overview, and then we can also ask, and I can ask you to touch upon what kind of issues have Tech Dot had to address as it's related to traffic conditions coming through the construction side, talk to the council about that, and then let you ask a few questions and make it clear to the public... and make it clear to the public that we're trying to garner and get set for. And you will be given plenty of opportunity when we coordinate a meeting, especially with, with Tech dot.
Doc, I guess what, to clarify what I'm requesting and what I was trying to state was the fact that these two presentations are on the agenda and that's, I mean, it's part of the agenda, but what I consider the real agenda where we get citizens' communications, I mean, citizens' input and everything starts with number one, Roman numeral one down below. The call to order, the pledge of allegiance, invocation, presentations and all that, I don't think those are parts that have citizens. I mean, I guess citizens could sign up for that, but I, you know, I don't see people signing up to talk about the invocation or the presentations or the proclamation and all of that. So the agenda for me, the meat of the agenda begins with Roman numeral one, and that's after presentations, after the announcements, after citizens' comments, after all of those things. And so that was my preface for making that suggestion.
Well, I think the model worked pretty well with the, the county and Aqua, Blue Barn, whoever. And I, that could have led to some agenda items, but there was nothing to do on those. This one, we really anticipate that will happen. So I think it's a model that we've used successfully. But we know on this one, we're going to be opening up to the public because we know the public opinion. There's a lot of energy about this more than anything else we've had. So, well, Mike, you got what you need. And if there's a problem with any of that, we can work it out. Okay. Anything else? Let's, I hope not. Let's deal with item A1 as a, this is a regular item. Tracy, can you come for on item A1?
Will you?
No, no, we, I'm saying, let's just, it's only the only item we got. Let's just deal with it as a regular item. So I'm pulling it. Yeah. Let's, we're not going to do consent agenda on this one item. Say it again.
I'm going to pull it.
Oh, I can? All right. Doc, can I pull an item off the, can the mayor pull an item off the consent agenda?
Well, we pulled an item off it, so we could do that.
That's a bit mad.
I mean, we pulled an item off, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, stop me, I didn't even stop you.
Well, I'm, 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 I'm going on. So what we have here is authorization to make a payment under a contract we've agreed to.
Correct.
And the, but, does, do we agree on the budget? Does the council agree on a budget by the year? Or are we approving something in particular? My reason for asking this is that a citizen last week asked, or our last meeting, mentioned that there was a, seems like in something that the citizen had seen and researched that the Hyatt was advertising itself as connected with Austin but not Bastrop. I know the Hyatt has its own advertising and marketing, and we have a regional marketing that includes the Hyatt and other, the other re, the rest of the region under this contract.
Correct.
And so is there, do we, have we approved all that?
Can I answer that question?
Yeah.
I think to that contract with 16, uh, make use of, June 16, we're recording my contract with the Hyatt, four and three percent. Whatever we may have in our budget, whether two million, three million, four and three percent.
My question's how it's spent. Do we have any control?
I'm going to let my answer.
Excuse me, Mayor. Excuse me.
I'm going to let Mike answer.
Um, I did put on my last city manager's report, the quarterly report of how the monies were spent for the last quarter. So that information is provided to you on a recurring basis.
So, so citizens have access on our website-
To my city.
-to see what we are, what we've done by your report.
Yes, sir, it's on.
And this is only a matter of the technicality of funding we've already agreed to.
Yes, and that amount is already in the budget that you've approved.
Okay. Uh, it would be appropriate for someone to make a motion.
I would second.
Any discussion?
I'm currently approval of the agenda item, yes.
Approval of the agenda item, right. Uh, ma'am, would you call her on?
Mayor Protim Dela Rosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliland?
Yes.
Councilmember McInally?
Yes.
Councilmember Michelle?
Yes.
Thank you, Tracy and Mike. We have an old business item, item C1, consideration, discussion, possible action on license to encroach within the right of way for parking within Hazel and Spring Streets for Los Fines Arts Center and Sculpture Garden to be located at 1204 Chestnut Street. This is Melissa McCollum.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is being back, brought back before us this evening for your consideration and approval of having parking within the right of way. And if you so approve, we would actually work on finalizing the details of actually doing the license to encroach. So we would execute that document based on, if you approve that, the signee. So essentially, the applicant has gone back and changed the parking along Hazel Street to be able parking and the parking to be along what is Spring Street right of way to be headed parking. And they are proposing to construct those within the right of way in accordance with our cross-sections. I would also like to, to point out that parking on the opposite side, so it would be the west side of Hazel Street, there will not be enough additional pavement to allow parking to be located on that side. You can see from the cross-section up here, it's a little hard to see. I'll, I'll zoom in.
Melissa, is that different from the last time you heard this?
It is. It is actually different. I did, sorry, I also didn't point out that they have double-checked and revised their parking standards and they need 50 parking spaces. So they are also proposing parking to be built on their site as well. So with that, they're proposing.
Now, the part I'm asking is, is it different is, I, I thought we heard last time that there was room for parking on the other side as the revised angle parking that they were going to work on.
Um, I'm not sure for sure on the clarity of, of that detail. I do know that with that we did ask the applicant to look at the cross-section and what, with their angle of parking and the actual width of the existing parking. So the existing right of way width is at 27 and a half feet, and they're looking at adding 20 feet on for angle parking, but with 22 feet for travel lanes, it, it leaves a little bit short for, for parking to be on that side.
So you're, you're basically saying that the businesses on that side or that home that's on that side, they can't park on that side of the street anymore?
Not, not unless there's enough. I, I think, for example, I think the airport does have existing parking that kind of extends into the property on the right of way. I'm not sure on, on that house.
Yeah, they have some spaces over there. But is that one house there that I know those people park in front of it, right there in front of the house? They can't do that anymore with this plan?
No, if, if, if-
It's not that they can't park there, it's just, we, we need to take into consideration that if a car was parked there, then the council's got two, uh, two ways to go. You can leave it and allow parking, but someone traveling southbound, if a car was parked there and another car was traveling northbound, would have to wait until the northbound car traveled through because there's not enough width with that layout for two lanes of traffic. So your options are, is just, we have that in other areas of the city. It can stay that way or make that a no parking area as, as an alternative.
If you made no parking from that driveway back to Spring?
Well, you can turn your mic on.
That's, that's true.
Kelly, are you still talking or see your mic?
Still thinking.
Okay. Gary, the comment I would have is that I think last time when we looked at this, the cross-section that you drew showed the whole right of way. You weren't really reflecting the existing conditions of how much pavement is there. So the right of way is wide enough to park a car on both sides, but the pavement is not. So I think what would happen if we don't put no parking signs and people will pull like they do everywhere else in Bastrop where there are not curbs, they just pull onto the dirt, they park-
There is curbs.
On the right of way, but it's off the pavement.
There is curbs.
May I ask about Chief?
Both curbs on both sides of the street.
Sorry, a second.
There is curb on Hazel on both sides of the street from Chestnut to Farm.
Sorry. Okay.
Um, is it legal to pull off and park like Gary's talking about on this, on the, not on the curb, but on the shoulder?
If you're still in city property.
Can you, can you come up to the mic so we can hear you, Chief, please?
As long as you're still on public property, it's legal. You have to, you have to park within 18 inches of the curb. Boy, over the curb, you have to be off the roadway.
And the right of way's 55 feet or so, so?
Right.
Uh, I'm sorry.
And we did go out there and check the street right of way width, and across the street, there's one big vacant lot. If that was to be developed in the future, there is enough right of way that they could move the curb over and put their parallel parking in at the time they develop that track.
And, and also this project would have seemed to me to improve the likelihood of that property being developed so that, I mean, we're going to, we may gain some marketplaces as a result. Maybe not in the short run, but in the long run, we may actually gain some marketplaces because of what, what gets developed across the street.
But if you, you may gain the spaces, but if you develop something there, they're going to use those spaces.
Yeah, but you still have, but-
They're, they're available.
Yeah. Okay.
Melissa, what is the rule for that house that's across from the Arts Guild project? I know that they park on the street, but may, I don't know if they have a driveway or if they, do they need a driveway? What's the rule on?
I will say, that property, I believe is a zone downtown mixed use. I don't have it offhand, but it's a legal non-conforming structure. It could be used, and it has been used as a residential structure, but it can be used commercially as well.
So they're not required to have like a driveway and a parking spot right there?
They, um, I guess they are what they are. If they were coming in to, to build now, we would look at, um-
Oh, no, there's a driveway cut to, uh, see the driveway.
There, do they have one?
There's a driveway cut, uh, there, I just pulled my mic.
If you're instructed, it's not going to be around.
Yeah.
So they, they would have a place conceivably to park if they wanted to park?
There's curbs on both sides of the street and they're parallel each other on both sides.
Okay, so.
Okay.
What I'm worried about is if the Arts Guild has a big event and all the parking is taken and they're not allowed to park on that side of the street, where, where do they park? But if they have, if they have a driveway or they have a place, then?
That's why I said with the driveway back to Spring, with their driveway back to Spring Street.
They do have one? You sure?
Oh, wait, not there.
Did you?
Okay. Okay. If you're going to talk, please turn your mic on. Okay, were you going to talk?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, how many parking spaces will this eliminate if we decide not to have parking there?
Oh, um, a lot. Essentially, they're, they're looking at requiring of 50 parking spaces. Forty of them are located in the right of way on both Hazel and Spring Street. They are providing 10 parking spaces on site with this new revised plan.
Was your question about the west side of Hazel?
Yeah, okay. I'm so totally confused.
Her question was only about the west side of Hazel.
Oh, they're actually not counsel, not counting the west side of Hazel. They're only counting parking that is on their side of the street.
But I think the question is that if we make it no parking, how many parking spaces would be lost?
And that depends on how wide the parking, how many spaces would be.
Right.
It could be six, it could be eight, it could be nine. But the work, if they ask-
Willie, please use your mic.
I'm trying to speak up to me again.
Turn on your mic.
I'm trying to turn it on here.
Well, I need to ask you, we're, we're, one of the next-
We have all the information. If you need, if you ask it.
Let me just say to the council, we're, we have citizens, I hope, watching this on computers tonight, and we're typing these things for people to watch it later. It's really important that we use our mics so that it can be picked up. It's a good technology that mics and stand up work down. I'd like to take the best advantage of it that I could. Can I weigh in on my mic down there? Yeah, sure. Okay. I, I would just ask if there's people on staff that have information that's pertinent to this items, please come forward and make, make those announcements.
Trey, why don't you come up and tell what you did when you went there?
That's why we're in trouble that we're in.
I, I will say with, just real quickly, that the Form-based code was looking at adopting standards that if and when we allow parking to be used within the right of way, that they would meet these standards. So you're absolutely right. Parking has been on, on the streets before, but it probably, it wasn't looked at in accordance with the standards that are, are now adopted in the Form-based code. And that's with 22 feet dedicated for travel lanes with additional parking on the sides.
I mean, where it's Form-based codes get on my nerves now.
Trey?
I would say you're not, you're not technically using any spaces. You're, you're allowing 50 spaces on the east side, but the distance from the intersection to that home, you could fit six spaces if they were 25 feet wide. So the parking that we put on Main Street for parallel, they were 25 by eight. If you made them 20 feet, you could fit eight.
Six, six?
Six to eight spaces.
If we did the one point, parking would be about six?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, that help?
Yeah. I guess, okay. Can you just review Trey or Melissa? I don't, whoever knows this. How many parking spaces again were required of the Arts Guild for them to-
That's Melissa. There's 50.
50. They are required to have 50.
They're meeting them with that current plan.
They're meeting them with this current plan?
Correct.
Less six to eight parking spaces for the public. Is that right?
Well, it's all public parking.
No, I, I will say they are not asking for a shared parking agreement anymore. So they have, with this new plan, with the parking in the right of way and the 10 that they're building on site, they do not need the convention center and/or City Hall shared parking agreement.
But I think there's some confusion. The parking that's on Hazel Street is public parking. Even though the Guild is taking it in as part of their parking plan, anybody in the city can pull in there and park.
So what you're saying is that the parking spaces that are already public parking are included in the 50 spaces?
Yeah, I guess in essence you could say that because the 50 spaces are for their peak events. And, and so on average, there would be public parking available even if, if we decided to make the other side of the street one, uh, no parking. And we really wouldn't make that decision until we finally saw the final construction and design to ascertain whether or not no parking was required.
So right now, we can't decide if there's going to be parking or not parking there? We won't know that until after everything's already-
Because they got to submit their, their details. They have to submit their final details. The important part that we wanted to clarify for this evening is that there is adequate right of way on the, on the west side. So when, because there's a very large lot to, that adjacent, at the corner of Spring and, and Hazel, in all likelihood, will develop as a result of this project, good probability. They along also would have to do some improvements on their site development. And there's right of way for them to put in parallel parking when they develop that site.
Let me, let me ask, is there anyone from the works for or board on the Arts Guild that wants to say anything? Can you clarify anything for us or make a statement or whatever? So please come remind us who you are and help us out.
I'm Matt Hart. I work for Barley Fiber Architecture. I represent the Arts Guild, council, city manager, mayor. Thanks for letting me be up here. I do want to clarify a couple of things, and I think that hopefully if we go through a step-by-step process, you'll see where I was going at here. Right now, this here to here is the original street right here. So if you're going to park here and you're going to park there now, you already have- So if you're gonna park here and you're gonna park there now, you already have a bottleneck, and you really don't have the proper parking. What we did was, we moved this here, twenty feet back, and then we, we have all this parking that goes all the way down through there. As per the Form Based Code, this is actually five feet wider than what is required. So we're leaving the street as wide as it is. If someone develops over here, then they're gonna have to do the same thing that the Arts Guild is doing here. So you do fall within what is gonna be required. For us to develop this over here, we don't own that property. The person that owns that property will be required to follow down the Form Based Code. So we're doing what we're supposed to be doing on this side by providing the parking and then also having as public parking. So in a nutshell, here, from this here on the side of the road, probably, you don't be able to park on one side anyhow with the twenty-eight feet. We're increasing parking by twenty spaces on that, as it is. So overall, we are adding to public parking.
And you're building.
And safety for that street.
And y'all are building those parking places.
And we're building all those down through here and on the other.
And also this spring.
Up on Spring Street as well. And we're paving that and putting in parking there as well, whereas the city, it's a gravel road right now. So it's an improvement to the city streets as well on that. And then over here, we have this parking that we've added in here too. There was a little confusion about the storage area, and that increased some of the parking. And then we had four spaces because we could no longer do the straight in, then we had to add in this area over here.
So you've cut into your green space we saw last week to make those, make those work? Okay.
I think he's given a good summary of the situation.
I'm sorry, I, I'm still, I'm still stuck on something. Fifty spaces are required for the Arts Guild to furnish for their parking. Of those fifty, a certain amount of them are already public parking, right?
Well, yes, I mean, you could park.
So other companies, when they have a requirement that the city says you have to have eight parking spaces, they can put in six and say, well, the other two will be public parking? Is that our policy?
It depends upon which district you're in. This is in the Form Based Code district, and the Form Based Code provides for the option of utilizing public parking, I mean, the public street for the parking.
So how many parking spaces, what percentage of parking spaces can buildings count as their own that belong to the public? I mean, is it ten percent, twenty percent?
There, any, I mean, any of those parking spaces that are in the public right away, anybody in the, in the public can park there?
Yes, I understand that. What I'm saying is, can any of the businesses around, say, those public paid places count towards their requirements?
Around that site?
Around any site.
Again, it's gonna.
I'm just trying to find a common policy here.
There's not gonna have to have a agreement to use a lot of parking. That's what we're getting. I had a question you had to respond to.
Right.
Right now, they can only buy ten of those that are on the four year from our right way. Is that permitted?
That, plus there's a design criteria that was adopted with the Form Based Code that allowed for the incorporation of the use of public right way to be used for parking spaces to count for your, your parking requirements.
So just so we're, just so we're going in the right direction, anybody else in the Form Based Coast area who is a business and building, they can count public spaces as their own required spaces? Is that right?
It's gonna depend upon the situation. I don't know the design, the width of the street. I mean, as has already been pointed out, this street is wider than some of the other streets in, in the city. So it's gonna be on a case-by-case basis depending upon where, where the location of the development's gonna be.
Okay, so there's no one policy? It's all piece by piece, by piece, individual consideration now? Is that right?
Well, i- if it's in the Form Based Code area.
That's what I mean.
But I, I don't know if the site is gonna be as big as this site, what's the width of the street?
No, all I'm saying is, so I don't mind which way this goes, I'm just trying to find a common thing for everybody.
Right.
I, I want to know that if another building, another business comes in the Form Based Code area, and you're saying depending upon what the circumstances are, they could have public parking used as part of their requirement for the parking spaces that the city requires them to have.
My answer to that is if the property across the street, which is vacant, develops, and they put in the additional parallel parking, as my understanding under the Form Based Code, they could count that as part of their parking torque, their project on that form.
I, I understand that, Mike. I'm trying to find out for everybody else.
Well.
I want some consistency for everybody.
I think the question is, is like, where, there's different areas in Bastrop that have mixed use or arts and civic, or it's the downtown. So each one of those areas has a little bit of different way that you address the parking. And the area that we're, where we're addressing the parking, we're addressing it towards what the Form Based Code says, I mean, on the last page, and it falls within the right way. We have the two-foot green, or two and a half foot green buffer, and so it is specific, but it's specific in certain areas and how they've been marked out in development for the downtown Bastrop area.
Okay, I guess that's what I'm asking. So it's a case by case?
Or a regional area.
A case by case business decision, each business will be a case by case study on how many parking spaces?
I need, I need Melissa or Mike to answer that. I appreciate your help.
Yes, Ms. McInally, it's, it's a case by case basis that would be looked at for each individual business that's looking to expand and/or build additional parking if approved by a license to approach, which would be before councils. So it would be looked at as on a case by case basis.
Okay, thank you. That's what I was trying to find out.
That's another question from you, Melissa?
Yes.
So I'll go back to the guy that lives in the house across the street from the Arts Guild. He or she, whoever that is, parks on the street now. Once this parking is built, if that person wants to park in this public parking that the Arts Guild is building, they are completely allowed to do that, right?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
So nobody can say, oh, he always takes up this spot or anything like that. We're not gonna require him to widen his driveway or do something else. If he wants to park there, he can.
That's correct.
And if there's overflow from the, what's across the street airport, they can also use this parking as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else? Well, I see that it's, the staff is recommending this, but it requires a vote. I move for approval. Discussion.
I think Ms. Rice wants to speak to the council.
Carol, you're up.
I just wanted to address another issue, and my name is Carol Rice. I represent the Bastrop Fine Arts Guild and the Lost Pines Art Center. I have asked our construction engineer to calculate the cost of what is essentially improvements to the infrastructure of the city with this parking, the curbs and the sidewalk. And so we are essentially, the Guild will be paying a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars approximately for this improvement in infrastructure all the way around this property. And I just felt like that was important, a great role to know, since you have supported us, so standing with nature.
And that hundred and thirty-six dollars means that anybody in the public, as I previously said, will have the availability to use those parking spaces.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I think, and I think we're ready to vote.
Council membership?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliland?
Yes.
Mayor Porter Delarosa?
Yes.
Councilmember McInally?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
We have finished all business, and we move into you business. You know, I know y'all been waiting a while. I bet we're gonna need a little break before, this could take a while, this next item, Mike?
Yeah, it's gonna.
Let's take a five-minute recess, and we'll return in probably five minutes. Regular session, we have item D1, which is a discussion and review by the City Council with officials of the Hyatt Regency Lost Pines Spa and Spa regarding the Bastrop Marketing Corporation joint marketing agreement. And this is a beginning process for us to try to build into a new system. And we've, we've preliminarily done a lot of work, and now we're getting into the nitty gritty, and I'll turn this over to Mike.
All right. As I stated in the staff write-up, I provide you a copy of a letter from the general manager and area vice president from the Hyatt Lost Pines Regency regarding the Hyatt's initial input on possible terms for the extension of the joint marketing agreement between the city related to the work of the Bastrop Marketing Corporation. And if you recall, the council directed me to go out and meet with the Hyatt, asked me to express first of all, and most importantly, that we appreciate the relationship that the Hyatt has had with the city, and we wanted to continue that going forward as we dealt with this process. And that was the message I conveyed at every meeting. And so through those meetings, the letter that you have before you tonight is that outcome of that, those meetings. We do have officials from the Hyatt that we present tonight to discuss with the council their views concerning how the city and the Hyatt and the BMC may work together to continue the success we have enjoyed in the past. This conversation provides both the council members and the Hyatt representatives an opportunity to exchange ideas and discuss options regarding the future work of the BMC, as well as how the two entities continue to work together to maximize the joint future work, the joint marketing efforts for the mutual benefit of the Hyatt and the city, and the city's convention center. So I know the council joined me in welcoming the Hyatt representatives here this evening. And so you wanted to start off with a dialogue, so now, Mayor, turn it back to you. You had an opportunity to review the letter, and again, in my meetings with Ms. Britton, we started out every meeting that the city was committed to the Hyatt, want to work with the Hyatt. I know there was an initial effort to consider this agreement. It was just circumstances beyond anybody's control that that did not get in traction. That's why you sent me out there to get this back on track. And again, per my request, after our several meetings, they have placed this letter before you tonight.
Let me ask the representatives from the Hyatt, is there anything besides this letter that you want to say at this point before we start talking about it? We, I'm sure we'll have some questions for you, but Kim Britton is representing them at this point, so obviously call on anybody you want to from your staff.
Thank you. Council, Mayor, Mike, thank you for our continued partnership on behalf of the entire staff at the Hyatt Regency Lost Pines. It is our pleasure to help the city grow in its transportation, in its tourism efforts. I think that the letter that I placed before you is very simple. It is basically a request that we continue our partnership for a limited period of time while the city helps transition to a DMO. We are requesting that that percentage be maintained at forty-three percent. However, we have rolled in to that an opportunity to help the convention center incorporate its market so that its, its marketing efforts, so that it's seamless and it looks very similar to the current marketing format that we use on behalf of the city of Bastrop. As well, you do have in front of you our sales effort, our commitment to make a sales effort alongside partnering with Kathy and the team over at the convention center. Those are the two distinctive differences as we ask for an extension, and that is all I have.
Thank you. Now, we can discuss, ask questions of my staff or whoever, so I'm gonna call on Kay right now.
Okay, Kim, I've got some questions for you. Is this sort of an outline of a service agreement, or is this it? Like what you're offering? Because this doesn't really say what the salesperson will do, and, you know, it doesn't say, you know, it's not a thorough, to me, thorough indication of what you guys are gonna be doing for us.
I hear that.
Go ahead.
Mike, I need you to turn your mic on, please.
I, I believe that is in the form of a concept that would be work between the city and the Hyatt.
That's what I wanna.
To, to put that into a more structure.
Yeah.
But Kim wanted to make sure that the council felt comfortable with the concept before we move forward.
Yes, correct.
Okay, so this isn't, this isn't the specifics, it's just the general. That's good, that's what I wanted to know.
It is just simply a general concept so that we can help the city move forward in its revenue production at the convention center.
Gary and then Kelly.
I would like, Mike, to go through each bullet point if you could and, and give staff's input on what, what you think about each of these bullets.
An extension of the current agreement through September thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. We are open to an extension through September thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, however, this is the maximum timeframe. I am certainly supportive of, of the extension requested. Up to the two thousand seventeen, that would be an additional year and a half, two and a half years. It would depend upon how we go forward with some of these other items that are listed. During this extended timeframe, interfacing with.
Hang on, Mike. Let's go bullet by bullet, see if we have any questions.
I have a question. Me?
Kelly.
Okay, so in your city manager's report, Mike, when you're talking about creating a city department of tourism, how, how does that, it sounded like you could do that a lot quicker than the year and a half. So how does that mesh with what's going on here, especially as far as marketing the convention center?
I guess that's how, whatever we, how we conceptually put together the, the bullet related to their efforts in coordinating the marketing of the convention center.
Was that, do you want to ask it more, a different way, or?
I think I need to, cause I didn't get that. Okay. If we consider the extension of the Hyatt's agree, Hyatt agreement, Kim, are you speaking on behalf of the Hyatt or on behalf of BMC, or both, or?
I am speaking on behalf of the Hyatt's interest in continuing our partnership with the BMC.
So because you own the BMC, you're basically speaking on behalf of the BMC? We're talking about the BMC continuing a law of duty marketing?
That is correct. That is correct.
Well, let, let's go back. Let's go back. Mike, can you give us the history of how this, the Bastrop Marketing, how the Bastrop Marketing Corporation came about, what the purpose of it was for and so forth, this current contract that we have?
I will to the best of my ability. It may not be one hundred percent accurate, I want to state that upfront, because I was not here when this agreement was drafted and put together. But from my understanding of, of the agreement, it was a tool initially to induce the Hyatt or the partners at that time that included the Hyatt to consider building a facility of the magnitude that has been built out there. And that facility is on the tax roll for forty-six million dollars. There was a sizable upfront investment. Then, the, there, through the ten years, it's been a sliding percentage. I can't remember what the top amount was, but it was considerably higher than what we are at for the last two years of the agreement. It has come down.
Sure.
Okay. And there was also, I, I guess. And there was also, I guess, an agreement between the city and the Hyatt that a portion of this money could be, could go back to the then-partners to cover some of their upfront expenditures in putting this project together. So it's just been in the last few years that this, from coming onboard, the spirit and the intent of doing regional marketing has been in place.
Now, Kim, you want to add to that or tell us? Because the reason, what I'm thinking about is what I've heard is that one of the things that the Hyatt Regency needed in the absence of a already well-established marketing operation for our city, for example, compared with San Antonio, that the Hyatt would need to make up for that deficit by getting some of this money and doing a regional marketing scheme that would include the Hyatt. And I'm assuming that's correct. And then second, do you want to add anything else to what Mike said?
I think that Mike did a very appropriate explanation. Kami Hardy, who is here this evening and certainly is a consultant on the BMC under the BMC Dollar employment, she stands as a marketing consultant. She's here and I would welcome her to add any of her comments. But yes, as I understand it, it was to help off, the percentage was, it started at 75%. You are correct. And over that 10-year period, it has declined, it has fallen to a 43% level. And it was, there was a percentage initially put into the agreement that allowed 25% of whatever the percentage of monies were to go back to Woodbine Development, the opening organization, to offset their pre-opening financial efforts that went into this project. And I think it was very appropriate. Since November, Hyatt has taken over as we are now and are very proud to be an equity product of Hyatt Hotels. And we are not maintaining that same concept, that 25%, we have put that, those monies back into the budget. In fact, as we discussed in the July meeting, we actually are currently putting new work into the website and we have done a fairly extensive photo shoot as well, really reabsorbing those monies in the effort. So I hope I'm answering your question.
Yeah. Who, so who owns and controls the Bassdrop Marketing Corporation?
Hyatt Hotels.
Entirely. And...
But the council has final approval...
That is correct.
To, regarding authorizing the reimbursements, that's why those were brought before you.
That is correct. And we provide a quarterly recap on those monies spent.
So we have, we have, even though we have not exercised it much, would it be correct to say that we could, we could exercise control over this by not approving funds if we didn't like what they were going for?
I would have to review the agreement. I would not answer that out of the spot, but there is language in there that the council has to approve the expenditure. I would have to just look at that and see what would cause the council not to.
Kami, she invited you to come up, please tell us who you are.
Kami Hardy. Until June of last 2014, I was with Woodbine Development for 24 years. We developed the Hyatt Regency, we started the BMC. And it was somewhat like you described, the city of Bassdrop did not have a convention of visitors bureau, which is what all of our hotel products are used to, Woodbine's hotel products were used to having. Speaking as a consultant now, not as a Woodbine employee. So we worked out an agreement with the city, Tom Scott was mayor at the time, and said we will start this effort together, start this CDB to jointly market the destination. So it was always managed as a destination marketing organization, as a regional cooperative approach. It wasn't managed in the beginning as Hyatt's marketing plan, like some have been maybe believed. Hyatt has always had their own marketing program. We tried to operate it as a partnership all the way along. And yes, the city in the improvement has approved rights over the marketing plan, always has. And we presented the marketing plan every year. And city council could say, no, we don't like it, you can reject it, but there are certain clauses in there, the timeframes that you have to apply that. Excuse me. And it's assumed approved unless you say otherwise. We never had any objections over the past 24 years, so.
You won't talk about...
I just want to say something. Yeah, I think the confusion has been, I mean, Willie and I were both here too when this happened, you know, initially. We were there, going through the approval of the contract and the concept and everything. And because we didn't have, you know, the center and all of that, this was an incentive because it was bringing online a very, very big tax collector for us in the region and everything. And so that's entirely correct, is what's been stated tonight. I think what has not been understood or what's not been clear in the community is the fact that there were two marketing efforts going on. The Hyatt had their own marketing as well as our regional approach. And a lot of times, people mistakenly thought that what the Hyatt was doing or their, you know, their national campaign was, was coming out of the budget for this, whereas it was not. And that's been the whole, I think that's been the confusion a lot of time because the marketing money that came out of the BMC strictly went for the marketing of our area and everything. But the Hyatt has its own marketing campaign that was a national campaign. And of course, you saw a lot of that because it was a national campaign. And our regional approach was also being used. And so for those that didn't know that there were two marketing, that there was that money and then there was the other money, it's been kind of confusing. But I know I've tried to explain to people, well, they are doing what they said they were going to do, but there's other money that's being spent as well. So I mean, I think clarification on that and maybe Kami or Kim can explain it even more so. But I, I think that's what, the duality of the marketing is what has confused a lot of people. And the commercials or the things that they saw that were done by the national promotions were not necessarily for us because that was not the budget that was approved, that's from their budget, they're two different budgets.
Over $3 million not been spent from the corporate.
That is correct, I can speak to that. The marketing budget that the Hyatt utilizes, my page on the P and L is valued at $5.4 million. About $1.2 million of that is payroll. And then we of course have our cost of sales and our complete marketing budget. That is the aspect that you will see, it does fluctuate between Austin and Bassdrop, appropriate to the market, the demographic that we are serving. It will do that. The BMC dollars, which has its own marketing program, it has its own marketing budget, we run it through a separate checking account, it is very, very separate. And that I have to compliment with Kami Hardy's complete, that was her discipline that brought it to that point. And on those advertising efforts, you will see it very consistently refers to Bassdrop and it will mention the Los Pines region. But we are very clear in putting Bassdrop out there whenever possible. I know that there have been questions about, you know, well, can we increase the frequency of the word Bassdrop? And I can assure you that that is a subject of continued daily conversation interactively with our, with Proof, our marketing agency.
Does he answer?
Yes. We need to have Bassdrop out there. And you know, I, as the director, I'm going to speak in my role at the resort as a salesperson, director of sales and marketing, I truly believe that, you know, the city of Austin is a wonderful city to be tagged to. But I will tell you that there are many, many opportunities, that it is wonderful to have the opportunity to sell this small-town charm. So having the name Bassdrop out there is a very, very critical piece of the puzzle for us. And that sometimes frequently trumps Austin and it's very popular right now.
Back to the part about the initial investors and the 25% that went to them that you've put back into your budget. Are we finished paying that now?
Oh yeah, that's, that's been, they haven't done that quite.
So the last bid was, okay.
When the sale occurred, when the sale to Hyatt occurred and Woodbine was an owner, was the managing general partner of that, that agreement, that side letter agreement went away. That entity that had that agreement with the city was no longer in place. Hyatt took over. So the entity that was getting paid back about $3 million that was front-loaded into the agreement wasn't in the picture anymore. So that's why it went away.
But their funds were still being stashed somewhere and Kim was using them.
The funds are still there because they were in the 43%. It's just that they were not going back to pay back any debt. That's gone.
Are you trying to say it's part of the 43%?
No. It stopped.
It is part of the 43%. It was, the 25% came out of the 43%. 25% came out of 75% originally. So it was...
What is the number that we have to work with now for marketing now that that is over?
What Kami said is when the, when Hyatt purchased the spa out there, that 25% that was coming out of the 43% went away. So there's no more money going that way. You've got the full 42 or 43% that is strictly budgeted for marketing.
So in effect, you've gained something, you've gained a lot.
More money can now go directly towards new marketing versus being paid for the old marketing.
Okay. However, you did not have that 25% go towards marketing in the previous agreement. It went to infrastructure for Woodbine.
It paid, no, no.
No.
It paid back for the marketing that was done before there were any funds coming in.
Before any money was being generated for the...
Which left 43 minus 25, right?
The agreement was actually launched in 2005, the resort didn't open until 2006.
Right.
So there was no money in there.
So if we, if we could simplify it and just say that, you know, maybe 43% was equal to $1 million. 25% of that $1 million in our previous ownership stayed with Woodbine as a repayment, if you will, for...
But again, it didn't go to Woodbine's pocketbook, it went to the ownership funds paying back...
I know people are listening, are going to listen. Would you try to get into the mic, would you, would you all switch back and forth at the mic?
Yes.
I'm not sure we're picking it up on the mic, Kim.
I think that if I can speak to Kelly because I think I'm understanding, you just want to understand the math.
Yes.
So we would market with $750,000, just as an example. At this point, right, let's move forward now, right, it is now a Hyatt equity property. We will not be retaining that 25% of the dollars because we cannot, that's not part of the agreement, that part, that extension, as Kami has expressed, it is no longer valid. So the point is that if 43% were to equal, and this is just a hypothetical number, $1 million, that $1 million will be fully utilized for marketing. And it is for that reason that we have suggested that we would help take on the marketing of the convention center to further our efforts alongside and also help absorb some of the use of those dollars in a very positive constructive way. That make sense?
So to summarize, to make sure I got it right, we're used to marketing using 75% of the money. Now that that agreement's gone, you're going to market with 100% of the money.
That is correct.
Of, out of that, you would take a portion for marketing the convention center.
Right, and that's in...
That is correct. And that is addressed in the letter.
So, anything else on just, now that I've reversed this back, general questions? Are we clear, is we, is enough to move on to the bullet points? Or Kelly, does anybody have something more for the general subjects? Because I want to go back to bullet point number one if we don't.
Go.
Okay, so Mike has reported to us on bullet point one and...
I would just like to make one other comment regarding bullet number one. When it was decided that the partners were going to sell the Hyatt, there were several proposals that were under consideration regarding the purchase of that facility. And I think it speaks highly of the fact that the Hyatt aggressively went after that to purchase that facility out there because of the relationship they had with the city. And by, by the Hyatt continuing to stay there, it was kind of a seamless transition because most of the people stayed right there and didn't move. And we could have been working with a whole completely different group and makeup. And I think that's something very important to keep in mind.
I'll ask a couple of questions, Mike, or a couple of comments on bullet point one. I think that the conversation in the last few minutes and lots and lots of conversation in the community makes me hope that we will spend some time figuring out if that 43%, continuing that 43%, even with these other numbers really is, is necessary. And wonder how we can gauge how much you need it. We talked about callbacks at one point, like we did on B E D C, to see some performance numbers or something that will show us that it's really, you know, working. Or maybe it's working too much, you know, we get some money back or something like that. I think Gary and Willie are used to that kind of stuff, might have a better, better feel for that. But I think that something like that is, is worth considering. I also want to follow up on something Kelly said earlier, and that is, I don't know about giving a drop-dead date for ending and extending if, especially if we agree that segueing into a DMO is the way to go, maybe the drop-dead date's when the DMO's in place. And so I think those two, those three factors, I would like to see us consider very seriously. Others?
Mike, how long do you think it would take to do what you proposed in your city manager's report about starting the DMO on the city side?
Well, I outlined, you know, I could have the basic structure and ordinances that you would take under consideration within 60 days. But those would be drafts that you would, and then it would depend upon your input and your feedback as to how fast that would move along after that point.
Give me, you still going?
Well, okay, that, that's necessary, obviously. But then what about the practicalities of it? Getting people in place and staff, working with Ms. Ward? How long do you think that will take?
Oh, I mean, that 60 to 90 days, we, I mean, the reorganization of some of the departments, that's not something I've been looking at anyways. To create a better synergism and getting the feedback I have from the council because I think we've got a couple of departments that could come together. And so that would be a fairly simple process. It would, I think, be, the key would be finding the individual to, to head the department and the structure of the advisory board that would be reflective of the council and you're making the appointments to that advisory board. Because we have talked that you want a good cross-section of people in the community and that's your bellywink. And so you'll probably want to fine-tune what I present to you, but clearly there'll be a timeframe for you to make your selections. And I think it's very critical that the Hyatt be part of that process and as well as representatives of the community, but also people that have a knowledge because we're starting from a clean cloth here and we got to get it right the first time, or if we don't, it's on us.
Sorry, Kim, I just have one more comment. Okay, so conceivably, we could, looking at your timeframes that you just... Okay, so conceivably, we could, looking at your timeframes that you just said, we could potentially have this run in by the beginning of the next fiscal year rather than two years from now?
Oh, yes. I mean, I could have that all, I mean, I think through workshops and stuff, getting your input, yes.
Would it not make sense to look at a transitional period? I mean, to me, it looks like, like if we said that by next fiscal year, the DMO would be up and running, it doesn't seem like you just can throw a switch and turn a DMO on. You have a lot of experience sitting here that has to get transferred over. And I would think that if we started now, if we set instead of a date of 2017, if we just set a date of the end of the fiscal year 2016 and said that as soon as we bring on this beginnings of a DMO, the key person, that that key person sits side by side for a while with the BMC right now and learns the ropes so that it will transition and we can keep programs that make sense, keep them going, and they'll know, you know, what's going on. I don't think you can just cut one thing off and start another thing. I don't, I don't see how that could possibly work.
And that's why I specifically stated in my last bullet point, there has to be a transitional period with the Hyatt as we transition from one type of operation to another. And also that the Hyatt should be part of whatever board that you put together. So even after we've gone through that transitional period, we still maintain the experience that they bring to the table.
So my, keep going. My thought would be, you know, that maybe we, we change this to say that we're gonna go till the end of this next fiscal year, or till this fiscal year. And while we're putting this together, you know, we might say, well, let's keep extending. We might say, well, you know, it's not practical to actually cut it, cut the cord on September 30th. But we'll look at a period when we may reduce the amount of money that's going to BMC as we're building the DMO. One, one budget goes up, the other budget wanes, and the two blended together fit within our overall budget.
I think that makes sense because it's gonna cost money for Mike to create this department, and it's gonna have to come out of hotel occupancy tax. And so we've got to figure out how much it's gonna cost for him to do it before we know how far we can extend this contract at its current rate. If that's the way.
Furthermore, furthermore, there are other options besides a staff, a city's department for this. There are a lot of other options, and maybe there are some blended things. I want to say it's not just with the, down the road a DMO, which I think is the direction most everybody wants to go. It's not just a matter of having the Hyatt at the table. It's having the Hyatt fed by what we do. I mean, we're not going to take a chance on hurting the Hyatt. So that's gotta be structured in. I don't know that we don't have a structure where we, we create a DMO and the DMO hires the Hyatt to do some major marketing for us. You know, there's, and they can set up a department of their own and that we have a joint marketing of some sort. Maybe they market our convention center at the same time. Lots of, lots of moving parts that are possible here. I don't want us to, I hope we won't stick with some quick, simple, easy answers. I hope we will take our time and wrestle this to the ground. I like the idea of the transition. I also like the idea of possibly not locking in, if we can figure that out, a drop dead date because it may be that we reached that point before or after, and the transition needs to, needs to fit if we make it all work together.
Well, we don't want to be too vague, though. Because the Hyatt and BMC need to know what they're looking at.
Right. Part of it depends on what we work out. Because if we work out a deal that's sort of equal but different, then it might not matter. You know, one of the questions, you know, for me is, the third, I guess the other thing I should have said earlier is, I'm not sure that I want to continue this thing without the city having more control. That's another thing that's been talked about a great deal. So just to extend this thing for that long bothers me. A transitional thing on a shorter period, like Gary's talking about, yeah, we're used to that. That's okay. But if it extends any longer than Gary's timeframe, I want to figure out how somehow the city controls it. So we're still on bullet point one, anything else?
I'd just like to add, Mayor, based upon everything that you just said, that clearly was the picture that was painted in my mind. And that's why I'm recommending that it ultimately become a department of the city because from the beginning, the city has overseen this. And to talk about the transitional part and how that's all gonna fit together starts right here. And especially to make sure that we put in place the right components so that the Hyatt continues to be successful, but we achieve what the council wants to see from a DMO perspective.
Yeah, and I'm saying, all I'm saying is it could be a city staff. We might set it up like BEDC, have a separate corporation of some sort. There's a lot of options we have here. So there's essentially.
Can we do that, JC? Is that, like, like the BEDC is set up like a separate corporation?
Separate corporation that would be controlled by the council. It's a statutory.
It's a statutory.
We could use that as a model, let me put it that way.
Yes.
So that's what I meant to say. Anything else on bullet point one? Bullet point two, Mike, you wanna?
Well, that's just basically what we've been talking about during this extended timeframe. We interface with the Texas Travel Industry and working towards a destination marketing organization. And as they've stated earlier, they're very supportive of that transitional, when we get to that point of it becoming, in essence, the BMC goes away and then there's now a DMO. I mean, that's what we've just been talking about here.
Let me invite any council member to comment on whether you have confidence in Mr. Teal and people that came to do our workshop, okay?
Well, I'd just like to know what recommendations were laid out by David Teal, except for we should have a DMO. I don't really know what recommendations he laid out. I thought it was a pretty DMO 101. I didn't get much out of that, to tell you the truth. So if you could enlighten me a little on what he said, maybe I just missed it.
Well, I think one of the things that they recommended was that in this transitional stage, that a strategic plan be put together in, in helping us work through this transition.
How will they help us work through it?
Through the development of a, of a master or a strategic plan of transition.
Yeah, because I asked them if they, if they were in the business of consulting with people, and they said no, so I didn't think they would do that.
Well, I think they'd be, would be willing to give us insight and evaluation. It'd be 25% of their membership is DMOs. And if, and as we put things together, if it looked like we were going in a direction that might cause a train wreck, they would be willing to say, I think you better look at it, look at it from this perspective.
Okay.
Kim?
If I may add, they did certainly offer their services in helping the city develop a strategic message. They offered it in four different phases. It's clearly on one of the slides. And I do recall Mr. Teal speaking, and you might recall, he talked of Post-it notes. He recommended think tank sessions with appropriate groups of people to make sure that the strategic message was targeting all different philosophies and different needs and interests in the community to, and to underscore the transparent approach.
Yeah, I guess since we'd already discussed that, I just didn't pick it up. Okay, thank you.
Do they charge for their, for their advice?
Through our membership, we are a member of TTIA at the Hyatt. He has not solidified pricing. However, he has assured us that we would be received in receipt of very attractive pricing. And he will be doing that directly with Mike Talbot. So I have a base understanding of it, but I'm not at this point privileged to share. I can tell you that it, to me, it reflected a very significant discount. And they do offer strategic messaging, councilwoman, county molly.
Okay, I didn't, when I asked, I didn't get that message, so, thank you.
Anything else on bullet point two? Bullet point four, about three, Mike?
Yes, that's consistent with reimbursement fee for administering this budget, and they're calling for 4% of that for the administrative and reporting that they do.
Does that come out of whatever goes into?
That's 40, that comes out of the 43%.
So I just want to say this. We're not given, the Hyatt's not taking money. We, the state gives us money. And we, through our contract, give it to, we take some of it and give it to the Hyatt. So we just, that's a technical thing, but that's the way the system works. So it's the, it's the people that stay at the Hyatt that produce the money that we receive and that we give back to them, and that we spend on all kinds of other.
And I would like to underscore that although we have put that as a bullet point, that is currently a reimbursement that is currently in the existing agreement. However, it has not been exercised. So we are just simply stating, you're drawing your attention to the fact that we will be, in fact, exercising that option to pull those monies out for administrative support.
What exactly do you consider administrative support under this arrangement?
Well, I have a team of three people on the marketing and PR team. I have.
In the Hyatt?
At Hyatt.
And they market the Hyatt?
They actually are my marketers for the Hyatt as well.
They're not BMC, right? They're just Hyatt?
They are not, they are employed by the Hyatt.
Okay.
And we will be, we will be transferring 4% of those monies, whatever the BMC dollars are that are gained, we will be extracting 4% and keeping that to help partially cover some of the costs. We have the three people, and when Hyatt did take over this particular BMC, when we took over the ownership of it, we did have to add a position to our team to help with the taking, doing all of the work that had previously been exercised as a joint effort with Woodbine. Now it was wholly on Hyatt to help satisfy the business demands that BMC had placed on the team.
But it's still Hyatt-focused marketing, right? This, this funding pays for Hyatt-focused marketing, not regional?
No, it pays for the regional. It pays for the efforts.
Sort of.
Correct.
You would, you would.
So I have three people that are doing the marketing and the PR efforts for both Hyatt, the Hyatt pie, as well as the BMC pie, right? So we have three people on the team. And I am simply underscoring that 4% of these funds will be taken to help offset the salaries that are being spent.
The BMC would essentially be contracting with the Hyatt for a portion of those three employees' time to do the marketing for the region.
That's correct.
More or less, even though it's no contract, but it's like a contract.
Correct, right.
It's in-house for y'all, but otherwise it'd be a contract.
Correct.
So.
When we have our own, if we go that route, have our own marketing person, our own marketing team, will we still need to subsidize your people? Is that, would that go away, or is that something you want to factor into your budget?
I.
I, I think those are specifics.
I think those are questions and specifics that we're going to have to lay out in how we're doing it.
And that gets back to transition and how it's structured and all that.
To be determined.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Kim. Anything else on bullet point, or three, or whatever it is? The one that has 4% in it, anything else? Mike, the next bullet point?
It is suggested a sales position for the Bassdrop Convention Center be funded through the BMC budget. An initial estimate would be approximately 8% of the 43% allocation. And will assist, the resort, Destiny Mart, will assist in the development of this position.
So, the, the Bassdrop Marketing Corporation continuing would hire something for 8% of the overall budget of some person or firm or some kind of contract that would go directly to our convention center.
Right.
And we would have a, some kind of understanding with the, the DOSM, DOSM?
That would be me.
You're the DOSM?
Director of Sales and Marketing.
So you would then, somehow we'd have some kind of an agreement of what you would do to help us?
Absolutely, and what that looks like, yet we have to determine that. But I will speak very confidently to this. It is absolutely my commitment to the city of Bassdrop through my role at the Hyatt that we need to generate more revenue at the convention center. There is absolutely, clearly, no question in that regard. And I do believe that we need to, and Mike and I have had very thorough conversations about this. There needs to be a sales system that is put in place that is very specific to generating those sales at the convention center. I think I'm gonna stop there.
Well, I would, I would just add that one of the highest priorities this council's placed on, city manager, for the public to know is we need to get that outfit over there up and running better.
And.
And, and this is very important to us.
And I shared with my discussions with Kim that that was a high priority that was being placed upon me to get the revenue up, at least our, a goal achievable, at least covering the salaries at, at the convention center. So that would in turn reduce down the amount of transfers having to go over to the convention center. And we've had long discussions, and this was an option that Kim has offered to us.
And additionally, I did take to one of our meetings, Mike, you probably recall this, Matt Schok with Hyatt Hotels Corporate Office, our regional vice president. He went over to the convention center and actually paid a visit, did a site tour. And he was absolutely, 100% supportive of the fact that we are generating a lot of lost business, business that perhaps is not able to book because we are sold out, or perhaps their funding doesn't meet what we would be charging. They have a lower budget. And I think that if we are able to really cross our efforts, I think that we could materialize additional revenues at the center.
Cam?
Yes, ma'am.
Were you ever referring people to the Bassdrop Convention Center before?
We have on multiple occasions, yes, we have sent leads to them. And there was a point in time that we actually even generated lost business reports. And I'm not sure.
Generated what, I'm sorry?
Lost business report. And that goes back a few years. However, I, I would put those in the hands of, at that time, it was Steve Dwyer, our general manager, and I'm not sure to whom that they were given. But I do know that I personally was running those reports.
So Kim, what do you envision this person on your staff doing for the convention center?
They really need to establish, number one, a strategic roadmap. And my recommendation is that they have this laid out quarterly, but with the ultimate goal of an annual financial goal in front of them. And we need to identify what are the key markets that we want to be speaking to. Are they vertically aligned, meaning are they by industry? Do we want to target a, you know, Texas State Association? Do we want to target corporate? Do we want to target military? Do we want to target weddings? What, what is the market?
So do you see this person going to visit all those places and doing direct sales?
Initially, I see that we need to set up an outbound as, as sales prospecting efforts, which means that these people need to be able to call on people. And they need to have a resource at their fingertips that is available to tell them what number they're going to dial. What is the address of this person? You can use tools as simple as Google, rooftop, marketing is what I call it, where you're, you're just, you would be amazed if I showed you how you do this. Mike Talbot had the opportunity, Kami brought him to my office one day, and we kind of did some of this. The information that you can pull up to make a sale is amazing through Google. But most importantly, what. But most importantly, what you need to have is an active trace system where you're reminding yourself systematically who I need to call and with some type of repetition so that you have the frequency out there. And right now, in my humble opinion, I do believe that that is a significant missing piece of the puzzle. So, yeah, will they be making sales calls? Absolutely, that's an outbound sales process. But you also have to have a very, a very specific system in place for leads that are coming into you. Customers are expecting to do business Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, and they want to be certain that the telephones are answered by a human being, not going into voicemail, et cetera. And in a world of such high technology, that's something that even me at times struggle with at Hyatt. But you need to make sure that calls are timely because in, in the world in which I am selling, the early bird will get the worm. 95% of the times, the first responder is the person that's going to get the piece of business and if you wait two or three hours to get a call back, somebody else is already selling to that customer.
So you see this person as being part of the sales team at the Hyatt, but focused on the convention center?
We have not yet defined that. I see this person selling the convention center using some of the tools, i.e. through lost business, turned down reports, et cetera, that we will be able to-
But not necessarily embedded into your team at the Hyatt? Do you talk about maybe putting them over here?
We have not yet, we have not yet defined that.
We've not got into that level of-
But we could, another thing we could do is take the 8% off of the 43 or whatever number we come up with, hire our own person, contract with you to mentor them, we could do that.
Well, the third option would be, we, we go with Kim's plan at the beginning and have her train our person and when we're ready for the DMO, that person transfers to us. So that person is like a transfer.
I, I would, I want that person to really experience the Hyatt sales philosophy because I think it's very important in this small community that we all have that same hospitality philosophy moving forward.
And from what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing Kim say, correct me if I'm wrong.
Doc, then Willie.
Okay. What I'm hearing her say is, you know, the fact that they would be in-house, but yet and still they would, they would concentrate their efforts on the convention center. But with the information and the technology that you have and also the lost sales that you have, they would have that as a reference point or as a in-house tool where they'd have access to that information, they could utilize that database as well as the other technology you have through computer resources that you've already discussed.
I, I'm not at liberty without further consult to my General Manager to volunteer our system use, but what I am at liberty to volunteer is the use of reports generated from that system, absolutely. And that will be very, it will be great. As well, I'm not sure what the current status is, but Deana Lewis with Bastrop County also at one point had brought on board a software system that they were using for leads for, that many of the smaller towns, and I'm sorry, the name of that system is not present with me at this moment, but we could look at incorporating that tool as well. But yes, we definitely, we definitely want to be a resource, names and numbers and people to call.
Okay, Willie?
I'm sitting here listening through all this and I was, I was going to wait until the next bullet point that I think y'all started on the phone, so let's. Kind of forgot the best way to phrase this because I've gotten a lot of comments in the last few weeks since we've been on TV, people listening to things. And what we're saying on the street about wanting to create our own DMO. And I'm, I'm getting a question asked to me, like, because I think they're asking that question to me because I don't think people in the community have the confidence in us to go out and find the right person. And Mike said this, that we need to get this right. And people ask, if you've got somebody all right, already in place that are professionals, why don't you just pay them to do the work for you? Instead of going out and creating your own department and then still having to partner with them, why can't they, when we figure out what it's going to cost, continue to have people that have been doing it for nine years now and continue doing our marketing for Bastrop and the convention center? That's what I'm getting asked, why haven't we taken that straw and looked at that?
And there's a way to blend that, I think we're talking about, we may do what you said with the DMO. It's possible, I mean, there's, there's all kinds of ways this can, this can-
Well, a lot of people usually are solo in the DMO.
No, uh, dear Mike, will you?
Okay.
Okay, well, I think that, that we have to, as I, let me say one more time, I think we have to wrestle all this to the ground and how it looks and how it, how all the ingredients are, it might make a difference to people if we explain to them. So I hope, I hope we don't agree with something that's not right and not supported by the community. But we don't know what we're talking about yet, you can't just say DMO.
We don't have all the answers.
Yeah, we, and we don't, we're not even, I don't think we know all the questions, unless all the answers, so.
Well, in response to Willie's comment, I've also heard the same thing, but then I've also heard, will the Hyatt be able to, with their increased focus in generating their own business, be able to give us enough attention because we desperately need some attention on that convention center? Kim had told us about the Hyatt's expansion plans, which are pretty, pretty cool and exciting, but in that effort to sell all those, will we get lost in the shuffle somewhere because we've got this little convention center? Are we going to get the dregs of what's left over? That's, that's the concern in the community, that we give it, you give the, the DMO over to the Hyatt and then we don't have the control over it anymore and it's lost in the shuffle.
Has to be an answer to that question, it's a good question. Doc, you still trying to talk?
Oh, sorry.
I'm, I'm, I don't mind y'all leaving your mics on, but it's, it's easy to remember to use the mic, like, mine's always on, so I don't have to worry about it. But I can't tell who wants to talk, so that's the only problem.
I just want to just-
Yeah, Mike?
Again, this bullet point that we're discussing, I think was a direct result of every time that Kim and I met, I expressed to her the council's unending concern about getting the revenue increased at the convention center. And so I really appreciate the fact that not only did I listen to her concern, she listened to some of our concerns and tried to paint the big picture for us all to work together.
And it's a real big investment because every nickel we generate for income over there, just another nickel we got somewhere else. And that's, we all know that. Mike, what about the next bullet point?
I think that just builds upon what we've discussed and will, again, probably reduce down some of the overhead operating costs at the convention center.
Questions on that?
Are we on?
Marketing efforts for the convention center, proof, the work of Proof Advertising?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Right now, is Proof the only entity that's marketing? I mean, you said Proof Advertising, is that it?
We have three consulting agents. We have, of course, I've introduced Kami Hardy, who has been part of this project since its conception at Proof Advertising. We also work with Dublin and Associates from PR.
Okay, so it's not just Proof, it's?
Proof does the marketing, Dublin does the-
PR.
PR. And Kami helps us make sure that we stay very much on focus and brings her best marketing expertise to the table alongside us.
Okay. I just didn't understand that sentence, marketing efforts for the convention center will be included in the work of Proof Advertising and Buxton's DMs? Okay, as long as, as long as it's not the only, Proof is not the only person, we still need our consultant and our PR and all of that?
Right, we, we just, we do, I, from my conversations with Mike, we understood that about $100,000 are spent in pure marketing. For example, the billboard on 71, what am I, I made an immediate phone call into Mike and said, "Did you build a billboard?" My opinion is that we need to be rolling that, that concept into what it is that the BMC is doing and make it look seamless, it needs to be a seamless look, a seamless campaign, a seamless effort.
Okay.
So, we will talk about how much of Proof's time, PR time and that sort of thing will be devoted to the city of Bastrop, or I guess we can work that out later?
I think we, it should be done based on the project work and upon the, you know, what that specific amount of money is going to purchase, yes. So we would take a look at what has currently been done in the past and we will seek Proof's opinion and their recommendation and how that same amount of dollars, how far would that go and what does it look like? I don't know that it's truly a time, you know, so many hours a week, that's not right how Proof operates.
Mike, the last bullet point? I'm sorry, Gary's, Gary's down, excuse me.
One of the things, I was wondering if it would be practical to tie the marketing of the convention center to some benchmarks, to say if the revenue at the convention center goes up by $100,000, because we're, right now, we're taking that money, any deficit we're taking out of the hot funds, that half of that money would go back to the, or whatever it's called, the BMC, the DMO. And as long as you keep expanding, you know, to, to really motivate that group to see some real performance there, that we would have some measure to say, we know where we've been at the last several years, we want to see an increase. And if you increase, I mean, every dollar you increase in, in, well, in net revenue is money that we don't have to reimburse out of hot funds. So I can see us returning money the following year, this building and building and building using part of the money that you, that you increase every year to advertise and market even more, an incentive plan, is that something that sounds reasonable?
I think the incentive plan should be more geared towards the sales effort as opposed to the marketing effort. I think that through the sales effort, you need to establish goals and have those thresholds met and really that, that accountability needs to lie there. I understand conceptually what you're thinking, but like with any marketing, it's no different than the marketing at Hyatt. You know, certainly, we have goals out there, but those goals are, they stop with all, they start with the sales process and all of the top line revenue, they don't, they're not measured by the success of the marketing campaign. Certainly, it plays a big role, but that's not where the budget lies.
Well, I mean, at the end of the day, though, the bottom line is, are you making money doing this or not? I mean, are you wasting your money doing these efforts and not getting, gaining any-
Sure.
Revenues at the convention center? I mean, I, I think that it ought to be geared to some performance characteristics.
Well, I'm going to ask you this, if you create your own department and you don't gain any revenue, what have you, what have you gained? I mean, just like what you say.
If you create your own department?
If you created a new department, spent a bunch of money and they go in there and increase the revenue?
If they don't increase anything, you know, but what I'm saying, I'm going along with your line and saying that if we've got a team that's, that's experienced, let's see if they can perform. Because I, what I can see happening is, is if we can work out an agreement where they start applying what they're telling us they're going to do, they're going to market this thing, they're going to use their, their methodology to make the convention center more successful, I want to see it. And if I do see it and it really gets to be quite successful, then I, I want to say, hey, I like what you're doing, why even do a DMO? You know, maybe, you know, let's hire you as the DMO. I don't think we need to restrict it one way or another. I think we could start out and say, hey, show us some performance, let's incentivize the BMC to do more and better for something we can measure, the performance of the convention center.
You bring, you, you bring up a good option and I guess what I'm going to ask, put y'all, Mike and Kim on the spot, if y'all ever got to a point where we said, if, what if, what if the city didn't want to do a DMO, what could you do, our marketing for our city and our, and our convention center for, what that cost would be to us?
No, we, we have not.
How soon will you know that? If you, if we win that option? I mean, wouldn't that be part of the options that you were bringing back with the cost that we wanted to see?
If that's what you want, yes.
I thought that was always part of the plan.
Well, it, it's, it is, if you bring it up, I mean, we can, there's nothing that we, we, that's, there's nothing so bad we can't consider. And this is what we need to do, is to raise those questions and work with Mike to work this out, you know, better, whether it's a city department or whatever it is. We just got to keep asking those questions and we've got to make a decision at some point.
I assume that's kind of part of where we were going when we were discussing what that new percentage would be going in after the interim period, what that new percentage would be with the Hyatt as we continue our partnership.
We haven't had anything but a bunch of talk tonight. You know, and that's good talk, but I'm just saying, we haven't decided anything.
But we haven't asked, one of the things that says in here is that they don't want to continue the agreement past 2018. So the question is, would your group even be interested in being the DMO long-term? You know, we fund you this money, is that something that the Hyatt wants to take on?
Or might, can we say might, you can answer.
Pardon me?
Might want to take on, might be a better question. I doubt you can say for sure what'll happen, three years from now.
I, I can't answer that question at this point. All of my conversations with our General Manager and our Controller have been through the date that I've given you and, you know, my concern as the Director of Sales is the fact that while we are all very proud to be in Bastrop, the competitive landscape in Austin is changing greatly. When we first started having these conversations, there was a thousand-room Hilton Hotel in the city of Austin and there was, you know, Hyatt Lost Pines was pretty much a large show. At this moment in time, we now have the JW Marriott that is selling 1,000 rooms and we also have a Fairmont of 1,000-plus rooms under construction and currently selling. So you have three properties that are 1,000 rooms each. That, that is, to me, that is a significant change. And I want to be certain that this city does not lose its momentum in marketing because if, that will be a work against all of the positive efforts that we have made. So I, I'm not prepared to answer that question, but I can tell you-
And that's why I would think it would be really interesting, that, that Hyatt would be interested in managing these funds, obviously for your own best interests, obviously for all of our investments because Hyatt funds most of our hotel money anyhow.
But Gary, we have to remember that a DMO is not just this one portion that, that she's talking about helping us get a salesperson to do the convention center, even if they took on the whole DMO, we've still got, under Mike's organization, the way he's laid it out, kind of makes sense to me because it's got not only the convention center marketing, but the, the local groups that rely on hot funds, it's got Main Street Manager and event planning that he's trying to figure out how that works into it. I mean, we, we don't want to turn all of that over to the Hyatt because they, they're not, I, I would think, not focusing on, on our local organizations, but that's part, when we say DMO, we're not just talking about the one part of that marketing.
I absolutely understand, I'm just saying, if they want that role, obviously, they would have to commit to the things that we need a DMO to do. And maybe they're not prepared to do that, that's why I threw the question out there.
I am not the person authorized, I, I would be speaking over my authority and I, I just don't think that that is something that I want to put my word on.
Gary's made me speak a hard word and I, I, I trust you and Mike, oh, we've got a great relationship with the Hyatt. But I have to say, I think someone hearing you say, we absolutely need to be focused towards Austin and this kind of stuff, makes me wonder, maybe it's like if I didn't know you better, it makes me wonder if your commitment really would stay as strong. If you're moving away from Bastrop, you're thinking about that three years down the road, I expect you to say, of course not. But I, I, I think it's a reasonable question for somebody to wonder in response to Gary's, your response to Gary's question, that maybe we won't have a absolute 110% effort. And I'm not, I mean, you can ask that if you want, I don't think I know what your answer will be, I'm just saying, I'm trying to verbalize a wondering, which I think the citizens will wonder about when they think about your response to Gary's question.
I, I interpret that to mean, I interpret that to mean that because of the market changing, the fact that we have to come up with other strategies to compete with Austin, not that we would be pulling resources from here, but the fact that Austin, as, as the competition increases, we have to, you know, change our strategy, but it wouldn't be taking away from us or, you know, changing the emphasis, it would be finding ways to more effectively compete with that changing environment out there with, with the other hotels and the other attractions that are coming in.
That is completely what I asked, that is completely what I am referring to. I think that if you had talked to me a year ago about what our strengths and weaknesses, our opportunities and threats look like, I will tell you that today they are very different. My, my commitment to this city is, I've been selling it now for 10 years, and I enjoy every moment of it. But I would be very wrong if I did not tell the council how significantly I am competing against Austin as a destination, and how greatly that has changed in the last 12 months. That change has been very significant.
Well, there's, you know, an argument, to me, that, or the thing we ought to be thinking about is, number one, our own marketing, who our competition is, whatever, but how do we, you know, maybe it's not regional marketing, maybe that's not the point, maybe the point for us is, how do we help you stay in business? And so, you got a regional marketing kind of concept, which you might, you're kind of anticipating moving away from, may be bad for us as well, but it still changes the dynamic of this whole thing, in terms of what we've been doing for 10 years. So I just think it's worth thinking about, and I'm raising that question, because I think it's very important. And, I mean, I think you've helped, you and Doc have helped clarify it for me, but maybe that just switches a little bit of the perspective. At least it makes sense to me, and I'll keep it in mind. Anybody else? Mike, I'm going to go with the last, thank you, Kim. What's the last bullet point?
Is, as, one of the discussions that Kim and I had was to, as she stated, in order to advance our competitive position, and we've even talked about it here at the council level, is creating a transportation shuttle between the Bassdrop Hotels, the airport, downtown Bassdrop, convention center, so that we're grabbing, we've got a method of getting people who are coming into the airport out here to our facilities. That's just a, a concept that we talked about, and so, Kim put that in as kind of a conceptual thing for us to think about.
And it's merely the concepting of it, it is not putting one into action, it is something that we do believe needs to be considered, particularly to draw the other hotels in the community as active participants in helping feed business into the convention center. That's really the spirit. And, you know, there are times at the resort when we are under such heavy compression, we absolutely want our people to come into Bassdrop and have dinner, right? We want them to have breakfast, lunch, dinner, we want to share the wealth of that business that we are bringing into the community, and we do believe that having some type of established transportation system would help. I also think that at the airport, it would be very nice to see shuttles that are branded, we have talked about that on many occasions. I can tell you today, I had a very, very difficult conversation with Expedia, an organization that we know very well, and I would encourage you guys to go home and take a look at this, because I'm challenging them on this. When you go in and you click that you want an airport hotel, because we are identified as being so far away from the airport, right, we don't show up. We have a wonderful proximity, but because of some of the rules that they have set in place, that doesn't. So how are people really understanding? Well, if you look in reverse, the city of Austin, I'm not sure how this is lining up right now, and this is my, my question to them, how can the JW Austin be 11.2, 11.6 miles from the airport, but on Expedia, they're listed as being 3.62 miles from the airport? That doesn't make sense. But yet, Lost, well, it's not, because there are a lot of policies behind that. But my point is that we spend a lot of money at Hyatt under Hyatt's marketing to make sure that we are in very, very attractive standing with Expedia. But my point is that we need to have branded vehicles going to the airport if we want people to recognize Bassdrop as a standalone destination, and that is a very, very critical element in doing that. And sending those vehicles to the airport, they're not just passenger shuttles like Hyatt has, we have passenger shuttles that will take people into Bassdrop. You need shuttles that have luggage storage areas, so that nobody's hurt and you're compliant with insurance policies, et cetera. So this transportation aspect is a very, it's a very large component, but one that would bring us some great visibility, in my opinion.
I think you're absolutely right on that, but.
Yeah, your turn.
I mean, I think that's something that I have looked at over the years, and I thought that would be a critical thing to us, to try to get people in, because transportation is key, and, you know, they've got the shuttles that come out and do different things, but there's no branding there. Like you were saying, if you had something that let people know about Bassdrop and about, and we could link all of our downtown hotels, as well as the Hyatt, as well as some of our attractions, and especially during the busy season, which is happening more and more now, all the different events that we're beginning to sponsor, so I mean, this, I think this is a key element we need to seriously discuss and consider.
I think this bullet point is a good place, too, for us to remember, that it includes the word Bassdrop Hotels, and that the marketing corporation is for, off our hotels, not just the Hyatt. So that's a good marker for us. Kelly, you trying to?
I agree completely with what you just said, Kim, and with Doc's statements, I think it's something that we need. I've no idea what something like that would cost to operate or to acquire, but I would really like if you could get some ballpark numbers, just so we'd know what we were looking at, because I think it would be a huge benefit to the convention center as well, as all the hotels here. If we could get people, since we don't have a hotel next to the convention center, if we could at least get them around.
Absolutely, and I would encourage you to take a look at some of our competitors. You know, when Barton Creek was purchased by Omni, I don't know if any of you drive on that side of town, but Omni immediately put some shiny new vans and shuttles on the streets, and they look pretty sharp, and they're transparent for people around, and they're getting a lot of branded attention. If you look at the Horseshoe Bay property, they too have a very successful, they call it a transportation department, where, you know, you know, they're 90 miles from the Austin Bergstrom International Airport, but yet they are seamlessly selling rooms and really enforcing that transportation. So this is a very fundamental aspect.
Another thing, a transportation system would help us with our parking issues, because if they don't have to park, then we don't have to have that same discussion like we had tonight.
Now, that's a big deal, because, you know, again, when I look at Austin, and I'm sorry to refer to Austin, but from a, I look at this in a competitive spirit, that is a really big deal, because that is a major selling component for us, that we offer free parking at that resort. Because if you go downtown and you want to park at any of some of the hotel's competitors downtown, you could be looking at $30, $38 a day. It's, it's very pricey, and this is a major, when you're doing a cost analysis for a group in the sales process, this is something that we are very quick to bring in.
One last question, Mike, if we were to work out a deal on this before June 1st, would the new, the new ingredients kick in then, or not, or only start it on June 1st?
That's going to be up to how long the council wants those to be.
I just raised that question. Anything else?
I think that Kim has done a great job in responding to your concerns. She's been a delight to work with, and I've really enjoyed, not only working with her, but she's given me a lot of insight into an area that I didn't have a lot of knowledge.
Yep.
Before we get off this, this topic, can I ask Mike to just briefly explain your vision of what a DMO looks like as a city department?
Well, first of all, from my perspective, there has to be an advisory board that sets the general message. So that's why I said the council would appoint an advisory board. But then, you got to have somebody execute what the, the board directs, or what the council has directed the board to come up with, and then the board comes up with that, and someone to carry that out. And that's why, for lack of a better word, it was just, use the word Department of Tourism, but maybe something else when we get, get done. And then consolidating internally all of our marketing efforts that are consistent with what is being brought down from the advisory board, like to the convention center, Main Street, all the things that the city does with the hotel motel tax to get an economy of scale, and, in an effort to try to save some money. And that's conceptually what, and depending upon where we go with this, you know, agreement, I, I would strongly recommend, as I have already, that if we go the DMO route, that the Hyatt has a seat on there. I would expect this person to have a close working relationship with, with Kim. I share her concerns, the competition's going to get a lot hotter with all these new hotels, and so, we need to keep that in our, our sights, so that we're creating a competitive response to that, and I think by working together and partnering together, we can enhance that and, and respond to that increased competition, because 3,000 rooms is a big change from when this agreement was put together.
Is, is, are you still going to Kelly?
So in, just in your vision, you're, you're putting Main Street under there and, and convention center?
Anything that, anything that we fund hotel motel tax, they would have to come under that, because that's, we don't have that current structure right now, and that gets back to some of the suggestions that Ms. Wirth made, when she looked at how our departments were set up, especially that the major source of funding is coming from the hotel motel tax. We want to get everybody on the same playing field and, and working together in, in marketing the city.
Is, is, regardless of how that, that last conversation shakes out, am I reading y'all correctly that we want some kind of a, of a structure that provides some kind of a continuation of Bassdrop Parking Corporation until we get the DMO up, if we get a DMO? So there's, there would, Mike, okay, so Mike has that direction, he will continue what he's working on, and I would recommend that it would be helpful to Mike if all of us went home and thought about this, thought about our questions that weren't answered or our conclusions, and I think it's legit for us to give those directly to Mike.
Please do.
Your communication to Mike only. And then Mike will use that as he moves ahead in, in advising us, can bring whatever he wants to do back to the table, and we'll talk at the open year. Is that okay?
This has been helpful for me tonight, because it's the first time we have collectively discussed this, and I've heard collectively from all of you at one time, so this, this has been very helpful for me.
We probably should have did this before you went to meet with her.
Yeah, we should have.
I actually agreed on something.
Okay, there you go. No, I, I, this is a very, very helpful conversation, we've been waiting a while to get this done. Again, I think there are questions we haven't uncovered yet, but I think we did a, a good job. Thank you all, Kim, your crew, for coming, thank you very much.
One question for you, the process, if us have information, is she going back, or is Mike going to speak with the general manager and what the, what the deal would be if they took?
I, I think if Mike hears from us.
I'm, I'm ready now on that question.
And maybe other, if he waits a little while.
A few months, and then somebody's going to lie here that.
All right, we need to meet, we need to have another conversation, I think the first meeting of January.
But this will clearly be a non-our planning retreat.
Yeah.
And this is a huge item that was going to require a bit part of our planning retreat to be spent on.
The more we get done, before we get there, though, the better, and I still think I would like to post this for the first January meeting. If Mike had your comments and could use those to go talk to Michael Jankovic, and accumulate what he wants and bring it back, this, we could discuss it in January again.
At what point do you want us to stop giving Mike ideas about how a DMO should be structured, though? Because if he, if he starts going down a whole bunch of different routes, we're going to be.
I think the question at this point is getting nailed down most of what we want on continuing a BM, Bassdrop Parking Corporation in some form. And I think preliminary ideas, I still think it's preliminary to work in the DMO, because we want to make sure we've got this nailed down, and then that, that gives us the time and the structure to segue into the whole total new thing, is mine. And we may make some modifications in what we have, and that buys us, that's the, the, what you call it, somebody said a transition, not transition, but a, whatever, as we, in, in some, and then we simultaneously work on the, the DMO, but I think we need to nail this stuff down first. If I'm mistaken, y'all speak up.
Well, I just, I just say, I'd like for us to vote on, on having a DMO, a city department of tourism, and then work in all the infill, but have, vote that we're going to go that direction, like, right away.
Well, Sid, would you email that suggestion to me for the January meeting?
Okay.
And, and we'll put that as a specific topic under what I'm thinking about, or we'll make it a separate night. But, but, I mean, you can, if Kay wants it on the agenda, I'm going to put it on the agenda, I just want you to tell me, Kay.
We talked about it at the first meeting, but we focused on it at the retreat, like Doc was saying, and tried to get Mike a more definitive direction to look.
Well, I mean, you may.
Who's not giving questions?
Willie.
What do we know about a DMO? That's what I'm here for, straight to the big, what do we know about it? Captain, you don't know.
Willie, Willie is asking what we know about a DMO, as Mike's not. Well, I, I don't know what we know.
Wait, keep up with it, what, what do we know?
Tell them, tell them, tell them what we know. Tell them we're working on it and try to find out.
But someone has not more than that. Right. I don't see it, obviously. I mean, that's the community idea, the community movement coming to be able to broaden up. They don't seem to say anything, you're seeing Kay.
If, if they, well, then, if they don't, if they have opinions, break it to us. If they don't, let's work out.
I don't have an opinion to you tonight, and that's why I think we need to take that, let Mike work through what he needs to do, bring back all of the guys for us, let's go on, put it on him in three months.
I, I, I'm not saying I agree that we should vote on anything, I'm saying I'm responding to a council member that asked me for an agenda.
I understand that, go ahead, put it on there.
Well, what I would like to avoid is, Mike made kind of a general recommendation today about looking, looking toward a city department, and if we don't like that idea, then we need to tell him sort of quickly, because otherwise, he's going to be working on a city department, and then, three months down the road, all that work will be for nothing, because we have changed our tune, so we need to kind of get focused on this.
Good question. Mike, do you need to work on that now? Or do you need to get through this stuff?
At this point, I've got to sort things out, and I think I have enough time to answer that question. Basically, we had a very sensitive discussion here tonight, and there were a lot of problems that are floating.
Well, let's.
At least based upon.
Can you turn on your mic?
At, at least based upon what Kim has presented to us, we, if it's the desire to, in a period of time, to do away with the BMC, then we're going to have to have some structure in place, as we talked early on about transitioning from the BMC into that DMO or whatever. And so, I will have some additional discussions with Kim, but we got to have something in place, we just can't, it's not going to be, just like somebody said earlier, just hit him the switch, and one, one day we're BMC, and the next day we're, God, stop, DMO.
And, yeah, and, and, you know, we've got a structure here that could go till 2018, so I don't know when it'll take to do that, but I don't, whether we want to do it tomorrow or not, we're going to put, put this on the agenda, and I think, and let's also put on the agenda Kay's question, also Kelly's question, do we want to start talking about what kind of structure we might move to when we, when we segue out of the DMO, if we, I mean, out of the Bassdrop Parking Corporation, if we continue the Bassdrop Parking Corporation, and if we decide to discontinue it? So we could go ahead and start asking, do we have enough basic understanding to make a decision in January or whenever it is? But let's get that on the agenda for our first meeting in January, we can discuss that, follow up on this, hear what Mike's found out, and keep that process rolling. So that's, and, and also, if you have other ideas for the agenda, or disagree with that, let Mike know, and I can talk to Willie.
One question I would say to that, everything you're talking about, I mean, I think Mike's got an idea of what everybody's talking about as far as, I think she brought up, what would be included in the department, and who would be under that department, but you got to come back at some point and, and see what those costs are going to be.
Right.
And that's part of the conversation. But, but, but. Did you know, or maybe we do it at the retreat, I don't know.
Or, or maybe, maybe, you know, maybe we can declare, maybe we can say, we'd like to go to San Francisco, we don't know how, how we're going to get there, but we want to go to San Francisco, or something like that, and there's all kinds of ways to get there, but Kay's asking for some kind of commitment to something, and we need to get that on the agenda, so if, we can either do it or not, or we can do it then, or later, certainly, we're going to commit to something. Question is when, I think, and Kay wants it on the agenda for the, we got to have that on the agenda.
I just like to, to get an idea of when we are going to, do we have a, a time in mind that we're going to actually make a decision that this is the way we're going to go, so Mike has some direction?
Well, we can also talk about at the next meeting, and we, can we? Can we set up a time schedule to work through this? Put that on the agenda as well.
That'd be good.
Okay? And then other ideas, send them to Mike. It's the easiest thing to do and I can talk about it. Okay? We're gonna close out on D1. How many people are waiting for a conversation about the shelter? How many people are waiting for a conversation about the Mystic Flight? Okay, so we're gonna stay on our schedule. Item D2.
Kim, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Item D2 is consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding the submitter of a location and a type of facility. The city of Bastrop proposes to build from the funds received by Bastrop County from the General Land Office for wildlife, a wild, sorry, wildfire disaster program for a shelter. Mr. Talbot?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The, this is item D2. The city of Bastrop had been previously notified by Bastrop County that $1.6 million in funding has been awarded to the city for the purpose of constructing a facility with the requirement that the facility could be easily converted into a shelter to hold up to 50 people in the event of an emergency disaster. The original date that the city was required to submit their plans for the facility was September 30th of this year. Judge Pomp, graciously granted the city an additional 90-day extension to submit the city's plans in hopes that the YMCA of Austin could put together a facility plan and the city would pledge the $1.6 million towards the YMCA plan. The YMCA has worked very hard since September to put together a facility plan, but unfortunately there just wasn't enough time to put all the elements together for the type, for the type of facility the YMCA wanted to build in Bastrop. Though the council was supportive of the Y plan, you also directed me to come up with Plan B in the event that the YMCA was not able to put their plan together. It was your clear directive that you did not want to lose the funding and we do have to have a facility plan on the judge's desk on or before December 31st. On the next page, on page, it shows 13 here. It's not a good picture, but it shows a general rendering of what the facility would look like. And the next page on 14, this is where, at this point, we would be submitting that the plan for this facility would be located at Bob Bryant Park. Probably the only change, and as you know, this was preliminary, rather than the driveway coming off Charles Lane, we would actually have the driveway coming off of the park entrance road into Bob Bryant because right across from there is another parking lot. As you can see, we just want to tie in so they can take advantage of that additional parking. And it is enough space with the additional parking over that we could add to the facility. And then on the next page.
Hang on, Mike.
Yes, sir.
Is that about Schaefer?
No, no. It's Charles Lane that runs east-west. Yes. But I want the, I think the driveway would be better off coming off the entrance road to have the traffic.
It meant to a lot more parking spaces.
If we come down here and put the driveway there, there's...
Where's the, where's the lift station?
Lift station's over here someplace.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but see over here, this cut, it doesn't show this, but there's more parking, there's like 20 or 30 parking spaces right there. So if you had an event here, you have that overflow parking and I just, it just ties it in together better.
That's a first level. And you could add another 10 parking spaces with less paving than you even show on your drawing.
It's that first little thing when you're going down to Ashford Shores, down to the left when you get into the park.
You came in Schaefer Boulevard, you'd come in this way, take a right, and come down Charles Lane and turn in, and this is the Bob Bryant Park facility. You came down Schaefer Lane, you come down this way, turn on Charles, and then go in that park.
Ashford Shores.
Ashford Shores, I'm sorry. Ashford Shores is right over here and you turn and then go right into here. Okay? Then the next slide is, we're calling this an activity center, space that meets requirement for having some level of recreational activities as well as space that would be adequate for putting in 50 people. We broke it up, have some classroom activities. It would be envisioned that hopefully maybe the seniors would transfer over here, boys and girls club if they wanted to use the facility, a variety of uses. It would be your entrance. You have to have a window here because if it turned into a shelter, we'd have to have a check-in point and all of these doors would become locked. And then this is your kitchen area, which would provide service to food out into this area. And then up in here is your restroom facilities, laundry facilities, and this area would be where you would store your cots and things of this nature. We had had an extension about a time, but over the last three or four weeks, we've whittled this down and I feel confident that this structure will look fine-tuning. We can deliver to the council within the grant funds that have been made available to us at no expense to the city.
I got one minor thing, it might be more trouble than it's worth, but if you switched the kitchen with the activity room behind it, no, the one, that one, and made the kitchen area an activity area, and took those two activity areas that are adjacent to the big room and put a removable door leading into the big room, you'd expand the space you had, the big open space. In my experience with buildings is that's the worst, the hardest thing to find and the easiest thing to chop up.
So you're saying, take this?
If you don't, no, that line right there, no, this is the top part of that goes to the right. That one, that could be a removable door and the same one on the kitchen, if it became an activity area, would open, would give you another, what Gary, 15% or something for that big room. It's not a big deal, but if it would be just as easy to do it, it would be a little more optional.
That is, we made this plan flexible enough that this room could be moved over to here and that could be achieved.
It would put all the plumbing on that one side, but just a thought.
Okay.
Okay, what, now, this is Plan B, the use, Mike, tell us about what you want to use.
At this point, the, I'm going on, who has approached the council, either in the past or in the current future, and that has been the senior citizens and the Boys and Girls Club. So I know the seniors have periodically come before the council, they're used, currently have under lease the old library, so this would be a significant improvement. And then it would be under the Parks Department's purview and we would rent it out or put recreational activity on, whatever.
Questions? Carlos?
Thank you. Carlos Liriano, I'm a taxpayer in Bastrop and appreciate your time. I was anticipating a little different discussion other than this particular discussion right here. But my comments are geared toward the need for a recreation facility in Bastrop. We do not have a place for our kids to play. We do not have a rec center. We do not have a local play basketball or what have you currently. Other cities in our community nearby have it and I think that as you consider the use of this $1.5 million, having a multipurpose facility that will take into consideration the youth or physical activities, recreational activities in our community is vital. And I would like to take this opportunity with the $1.5, instead of building just a building, I would like to be able to find a way to incorporate a rec center for our The Y is doing great things, but eventually we are in desperate need, we're gonna need a rec center. We are also going to need a mechanism in this community for a recreation system. If the Y is not going to be that mechanism, I'm asking you, the council, to come up with a system that will put in place an active focus recreation department for our kids. We do not have it, we have a recreation department now, I understand that, but we could do a lot better. And as we continue to grow, this is something that we are going to need. So I appreciate your time. The $1.5 is a start. If we do not have a plan for that now, I encourage you to try to find a way to get that going. If the Y is the system that we're going to use to get that project going, I'm all for it. If it's not, what is the plan? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spur. Go ahead, Doc.
Well-stated and I agree 100%. I've been saying that for years and I'm just glad to see that there are others that think that should happen and hopefully I'll have to see.
Well, a question for you and Kay and Mike is, is this subject that Carlos addressed part of the strategic planning process? Is that in the?
All that will be in there.
I mean, that's one, I mean...
It's in there and was voted as one of the most important things that we do.
So...
Is the Y specifically.
One way, one place to address this with the strategic plan, I mean, one way to address Carlos's concern is the, there are other ways, but one is the strategic plan. Okay? And Carlos, I'll just refer that to you, that there's a active program going on as we plan ahead and I'd encourage you and others, like, to continue talking to, with, you know, Doc and Kay, our two members here, there's another 15 or 20 people, Conish Rader's the chair sitting across from you there, so I hope you will put your two cents in there and for myself, I hope you will continue to press us because as Doc said, we've been talking about this for a long time and we've kind of been all over the map for the last 25 years and as we grow, we need to address it. You want to say more? I'll ask you, come out.
Well, I just, I appreciate the strategic plan, but $1.5 million doesn't come very often. I would hate for us to have a strategic plan with that as a priority and not have the ability to fund it. So as we take a look at this particular opportunity with the $1.5, we need to make sure that if it's possible to integrate that with the $1.5, that we do so. We also have to take a look at the available land that is, that the city has for recreation. At some point, that also is going to have to be addressed as we continue to grow. So yes, we do have a strategic plan, it is a priority. My point is that we have $1.5. If this particular building, and I know I've had numerous discussions with Mike and I know he's working really hard at trying to figure out what to do with this, but if you take this particular facility right here that he's proposing tonight and you expand it a little bit larger to where you could put a gymnasium in the middle, you still will be able to accommodate the 50 families necessary for the grant. I just want the focus to be on, some of the focus to be on recreation, not additional rooms inside of four walls. Our city needs recreation, our kids need recreation. I would love, and I've had numerous conversations with the Y, for them to become that mechanism that would allow us to have organized play in this community. And I think that the $1.5 would go a long way if this is well thought out with recreation in mind. Thank you.
Mike, how hard would it be to convert that open space in the middle to a gymnasium?
You're looking probably at another million dollars.
Another billion?
Because if you recall the original plan that we had with $2.2 million, which was a gymnasium, and your directive to me was to bring in a facility that would be, I could bring in a facility for the amount of the grant. And so I had to scale, I had to go from $2.2 million down to $1.6. And so that's, this is what I've had to do. And the big cost is because when you put the gymnasium in, you create an elevation, a whole different roofing system, whole different elements from heating, electrical, and just, and so I was responding to the directive that y'all gave me to come up with a plan to have and that's why, and I've been keeping you informed that that's what I was working towards. And I will say, we have to have this on the judge's desk on or before the 31st. I'd like to have it there before Christmas, but I think that the Y is still going to try to see if they can pull together the work that they've already started. And I can't speak for the county, but as long as a facility got built and it ended up in a different location, I don't think the county would be objectionable to that as long as it was a solid plan that we could lay there. And keep in mind, we've got the two-year timeframe. We're already, we lost three months of that two-year with this extension and it would have to be substantially complete. I'm confident as with any federal grant that you would get an extension, but you're not gonna get an extension in two years if there's not dirt being broke and striping water going up. And the judge has made it pretty clear to me that if we don't have this on his desk by the 31st, the money's going someplace else.
JC, this whole item is about Plan B and I noticed that no one from the Y has signed up to speak on it. It senses the Y impacts, so could I ask, is there somebody from the Y that wants to speak or should I ask them just to, should I just hope that somebody from the Y would sign up to speak?
Absolutely. Well, the agenda item is, middle of the location, the type of facility proposed to build with the funds received from the wildfire disaster program. So it isn't, the posting is not related to Plan B. That may be the thrust of Mr. Talbot's presentation, that the posting would allow for the...
I had, let me try my other thing. I'm hoping somebody will sign up to come up.
Let me say something. Everything, Carlos, and everybody's gonna get up and talk to the fact that my recreation is true. Doc's been here, up here forever and he knows what the problem has always been because nobody, Doc was given a task one time to go out and solicit private and public funding for a rec center and we came back to zero, we've been at .0 since. And if nothing's changed today, we're gonna, the city's gonna make a commitment to building a rec center and funding rec center whether it's on our own or with the Y, the money's gonna have to come from a bond fund. And that's, that's the point where nobody wants to challenge. And we're gonna sit here some more tonight and listen to some more, some more talk. And Mike was asked to come back with a Plan B submitted to the county and I hope we don't lose this funding because we're sitting here again taking this up at 12-hour, Mike.
I have met my commitment. You've done your, you've done your job.
And I'm telling you, we can build that facility. And I'm gonna build it to you for $1.6 million.
But we had, we sat here for three months on the extension, heard nothing, and on the last night, we're gonna hear, if this would have happened a month ago, I wouldn't be making these comments, but here we are at 12-hour on December 8th and you want to get in before Christmas?
I don't, I don't, I don't think anybody disagrees with that. That's exactly what we've told Mike to do. Kay?
I'm James speaking.
I'm James Fink, CEO of the YMCA of Austin. Thanks for the time, mayor, council, city manager. I think this is, you do have the timeline, you're doing your due diligence, you have to make that decision. I think, though, the longer timeline is this two years that three months have been used to do these construction drawings, get it permitted, have it built. A year and a half would be more than sufficient time to do that. What I would like to propose is that you approve this, but there's an opportunity that we can come back in a three-month time span and show you a better way, and a better path forward, I think, for the city and the citizens of Bastrop. We do have preliminary design to build a 20,000 to 25,000 square foot facility that would include all the amenities that Mike showed, plus all the amenities that Carlos is hoping for, plus more. In an innovative model that I think that would, you would find of interest. One of the things that we are doing is partnering with the medical community more and more as we move forward with our work because of the type of prevention programming that we're doing. We have had a preliminary conversation with Seton. They are interested in doing a medical facility here in Bastrop in conjunction with the YMCA. And why that is attractive to them is because of the changes in the healthcare landscape. They are getting penalized if they don't keep people well. So when you think about the healthcare system as it used to exist, it was really a sick care model. Now with bridging with the YMCA, you are building healthcare and wellness and building that bridge. So when somebody is going and getting their medical services, they're also continuing that wellness journey that they need with a provider like the YMCA. Plus, we just drive a lot of traffic when we have a full facility. Now, the funding mechanism that you mentioned is not in place yet. But I do believe with the 1.6, with the 2.5 that maybe that we could probably bring from the YMCA side, bringing in economic development and the city of Bastrop to split the other 2.5 million that'd be needed in a funding way that would make it palatable, that you could absorb over maybe a longer period of time, might be something that you would consider maybe in the March timeframe.
Mayor, thank you very much. Willie?
Mike, can I ask you a question?
Can you turn your mic on?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. On the three-month extension that the judge gave you till from September to December, and you had to have those plans in, did he offer another three-month extension or...
No. What, the only thing that they might be open to, I can't, I can't...
You don't know that tonight.
I don't know that.
Okay, so we came back to the assumption that somebody might know something. Well, hey, make him, sir, let me finish. I'll let you talk. Thank you. You don't, you can't, we can't make a decision on the assumption, I wish we'd have known that, where he could have called the judge tonight and said, if we do something different, do we have any time down the road? Because I'm not gonna take a chance. If the people in Bastrop did, we were taking a chance and losing 1.5 million in free money and mess this up, it'll run everybody out of here.
And, and when I, and that's my recommendation, that we deliver the plans that I have prepared. And if something comes up, we can take it to the county and see what they say.
And if he does, and you take it to the county, he does say that that possibility, that he'll not look at it, give another three months, then you come back and we'll do something different. We can't take a chance of waiting and not having it and lose that money. I just don't think...
I've worked too hard to get this plan to where it is tonight.
James, did you want to say something else?
I did. We did talk to Judge Papia about this. And he did inform us that you do have to decide tonight. And this is not, I'm not up here to try to convince you otherwise. But he did say that if you came back with a, with a different plan that still met the timeline, he would definitely look at that. One doesn't have to trump the other at this point.
Well, that's fine. You can tell him that. I'm saying you shouldn't have been here telling something. I don't have a problem with it. He does that after the fact that we deliver the plan that Mike delivered tonight. And Mike comes back and says, he's giving us an extension, let's see if we want to do something different. But tonight, I'm going with what the city manager brought forward, and then he can deliver those plans that he does what he needs to, and then have that discussion with the judge face to face about, do we have the intention or don't we have it?
That's fair.
And that's what you said, you said, go ahead, advise him to go ahead with the plan tonight, and then...
We're not hearing from the judge now. To go with the plan when we have the time. Well, we best find it out. We need our human to go down and dump the judge.
What's on the table is Mike's recommendation, now we can enter the debate. I'd like to make a motion. Oh, I didn't know you weren't finished, I apologize.
What I was saying was, the general was saying that basically, to go ahead with, in other words, I understood him to say, go ahead with Mike's recommendation, and then if we come up with another plan later on, we can change it. So we're not trying to kill this project as is being stated tonight, we're trying to continue it.
I know where that conversation that I hear where the judge has approved. This is what we want to do, we're not reaching for issues right now.
And I'll second it, this Plan B to be submitted to the judge.
I got a second, I think I heard the second from Doc.
And we'll do some of the file tuning that was suggested.
Everybody seconded it. Anyway, I heard Doc, he was saying while Gary was...
I'll amend my motion to allow some bits of the design before it's submitted.
We got time.
So, Doc, am I okay with you?
Yes, so your question.
Can you turn your mic on?
You haven't said anything about Mike wanting the judge to ask him for a possible...
I don't think that's a question here. That's not a part of his motion. Now, that may be something Mike wants to do, he hasn't heard this, and we may instruct him to do that in January, but that's not part of the conversation. Any more discussion? Okay, Anne, we're ready to call her up.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gillis?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Delarosa? Councilmember McEnroe?
Yes.
Thank you all. Mike, it's been a long road getting to this point, I appreciate it. And that was nowhere near done, but thank you for your hard work and your staff, and also for following the council's direction and keeping down the 1.6. Now for something sublime. Thank you, thank you, Doc. I know, I was trying to get a little levity, thank you for at least copying. Consideration, discussion, possible action regarding requests from Bastrop Arts and Public Places Board members requesting approval to purchase the Poco Opoco art sculpture rather than purchase the Mystic Flight art sculpture, which we have previously approved. So, Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is item D.3 on page 16 of your packet tonight. A few months ago, as the mayor stated, the council approved Bastrop Arts and Public Places to spend up to $12,000 towards the purchase of the Mystic Flight sculpture. This sculpture was one of the sculptures of the Art Sculpture Project that BIPP held in 2015. At the December board meeting, the BIPP board voted to forego purchasing the Mystic Flight sculpture and instead the Poco Opoco art sculpture, which was also part of the art sculpture that was submitted for the Art Sculpture Project. The amount of funds being requested for the purchase of the sculpture is $12,000, which is the same amount that you had allocated that, but you do, are required to approve the project. And so I just need your approval to that.
I can, I got a question. Kay, which one is the Poco Opoco? I know what the Mystic, I know what the Mystic... I know what the Mystic. Well, I care, I mean, y'all can...
Do you know why they changed the...
The turtle? It's the turtle down on the vacant lot down there. It's got a Santa hat on it.
Yeah, that's why they changed Ms. McNich for exactly what it is, definitely a very popular piece.
Who made the motion, please?
Willie? Seconding by Gary, y'all ready to vote?
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Mayor Proton Delarosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gillis?
Yes.
Councilmember McEnroe?
I need to, I need to ask JC. I was the council liaison at one time, I'm not sure that I still am because Mike is now. But is there any reason I can't vote on this, that I'm gonna, okay, then I vote yes?
And if I could vote, I'd vote C. And now we have a Hispanic turtle, Kay, and we're working on the Hispanic, I guess that's Spanish, or is it Latin? Oh, why would we change the name? Out of D.5, thank you all, and thanks, if there were any BIPP members here, thank you for your great service to our city. Out of D.5, consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding a resolution related to the Bastrop Vision Task Force formalizing...
It's D.4, Mayor.
I'm sorry. D.4 is, with my wishful thinking, that's why Trey's standing up here. Consideration, discussion, and possible action on a resolution. City of Bastrop in support of an application to the Federal Emergency Management Agency Hazard Mitigation Grant Program to purchase emergency generators for critical facilities.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is just the follow-up to the approval we did at the last council meeting to submit a grant to FEMA for hazardous mitigation. And this is a resolution supporting that we'll pay the 25% of our award.
Can I move to approve that then, please?
Kay, move. Can you turn your mic off, Willie?
On the yield ramps, that's part of the...
Yes, this is for floods, that was for fuel mitigation.
Yeah, they did good.
Same type of program.
Looking pretty good.
Yeah, it was.
Discussion. Please call the roll.
Councilmember McEnroe?
Kay?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Delarosa? Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gillis?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Trey. Now I think we're on D.5. Consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding resolution related to the Bastrop Vision Task Force formalizing the work and activities of the Vision Task Force, recognizing the Vision Task Force as an entity of the city, providing certain procedures, policies, and regulations applicable to same, providing a serviceability clause, and providing an effective date. I raised this because I'm persuaded, this is kind of a follow-up from our deal last week where we kind of tried to regularize these task forces. I think that the work we have seen done by the Vision Task Force at this point's been very helpful. I think that the members are wanting to continue the work they've done. And I think we never go wrong having people bringing ideas to us. So I'd like to see us regularize this, continue it in the form that, I must say, JC worked out for us in putting it together as a formalized task force. Question?
Part seven, where it says they'd like to recognize members, the two people listed, is that all, all you're gonna recognize? Just you two?
We need to...
Sorry, Anne asked me to fill those in, and I'm so sorry, Anne, I did not.
Can we do that now?
Yeah, let's see.
So my suggestion is we continue them on, that we do a year, a year appointment. This is a task force, we just do it one year at a time, and we can continue until May with that group. So there's no reason, I think, to start from scratch.
Right. Okay, so you want to know the names, huh?
Yes, we have to.
Okay, John Landworth? Mike Talbot?
Mike will be staff.
Yeah, I know.
Staff liaison, Kay is the council liaison.
Becky Wumble? Gosh, I'm trying to think. Martha Harris? Yeah. Let's see, how many is that? One, two, three?
I'd say what the deal is on these task forces, I think we ought to do them every year. That's what I'm suggesting, at least on this one.
Nancy Wood?
Just to see how it works. Is there a problem with Nancy being a staff member because she's temporary, Mike?
No.
Okay. I'm sorry, Willie?
I was trying to think, you can go do all of them at one time next year, or just...
I think it's, I think the idea is, you know, every year we just renew it. And if we have some changes, well, I think we've got to do the dogmake recommendations if they want more. Somebody drops out, or council wants to go, somebody else can do that, but...
And is this the same timeframe as you do on the board?
Yeah, that's where we, yeah, it's the same. And they all end, you know, we're regularizing that, we call onto that, thank you very much.
This is the first board that we heard from lately, I don't know diversity?
Counselor was about to ask, I mean, is this the board that, of course, or she just won't talk about one particular board and wants to find that, not about our board?
Well, I think the appropriate question would be, is this board diverse enough? But I'm hoping that we will let them continue since they're in place until the end of the year, and we could have a diversity conversation if we want to.
I appreciate your comment, all the way you manned aboard, so...
But I think that's on the agenda here, Willie, I think if you want to talk about that...
What are you talking about, one task board?
No, you can talk about whether this is a diverse group or not, so please, please... Can you turn your mic? It was some kind of infield...
Oh, okay.
...task force that we had when we had the SDA, that was about five years ago.
This, this particular board will be recommending members that they feel would be contributing. Everybody has a different job and a different expertise in this, so we would find members that are contributing things that the task force needs to consider and then bring those to the council.
So I think maybe, Willie, a possibility for you, because there's two, and there'll be two other spots available, I guess. And I don't know if we should count Kay or not as a member, if she's a... Yeah, I guess, well, okay, we've got it. We've got it, well, okay, we got, it's just like, okay, take it back, it's like Doc on the pit board, okay. So Kay is a member, but also council liaison, I guess is a way to say that. I think that, that, well, you could ask me to post, or maybe we could talk about it now, do we want to send, send some advice to this board to follow your logic about diversity or something, Willie? Okay, never mind, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I said, okay.
What I do with my needs is, diversity needs to happen.
Is, can we ask, can we discuss that in the process of this, or should we post that for January?
I think that needs to be posted.
Anne, will you put that on the agenda for January, that we'll talk about maybe some advice to the board for filling those other two spots? So is there a motion to do this, or do you want to talk about, well, first of all, is there a motion?
I second.
Kelly and Kay, and so discussion, something you want to see changed, concerns you've got?
So we're approving it without the board, or with the board in question?
She, yeah, with the board, would you read the names of the board?
Yeah.
No, let me let Anne see if she's got it. Oh, you haven't even heard, have you?
Yeah, I'm just trying to choose her. John Landworth. Kate McEnroe, Dick Smith, John Landworth, Mike Talbot, Becky Wumble, Martha Harris, Nancy Wood.
Now, Mike, is it appropriate, shouldn't you be the staff liaison and not...
I'm the staff liaison, yes, sir.
So we'd have six then, right, and with three, three possibilities? At least one, when you fill at least one spot, and possibly three. Because we don't want my...
And I hope I concluded everyone, I'll let you know if I haven't.
Well, Doc, you can, the board can recommend that person, so...
But the way this thing is worded is the current individuals will be appointed until the transition period, whoever, whomever they are, is that what you're going to do tonight?
So...
We do, we have six members now, if Ms. McEnroe is inadvertently...
If she's left somebody off, we'll...
Yeah, if she's left someone off, we'll, we'll fill that in. The point is that we're carrying forward the members that have been serving all along. And then if there's a vacancy, we'll post it, and then we'll make the appointments.
Right.
And get the board full. If y'all want to suggest more diversity, let's bring that up as an agenda item in January.
We've got that on the next January agenda. And so we'll talk to you about what constitutes a vacancy, since maybe there's a vacancy and maybe there isn't for the other two places. Okay?
That really bothers me, because it bothers me if somebody will break it up like that in the meeting.
Well...
And reach state, but I guarantee you that at that point, if you were sitting there and that, you wouldn't have a lot of...
I don't know that that's what we should be talking about right now. If you want to put it on the, Doc's gonna, did you ask me to put it on the agenda?
No.
Can't remember what you said. Can't remember what you said.
Please.
We want to talk about diversity on this board.
On all of our boards.
On all of our boards, good. And you can talk about this one. So anybody want to propose changes or have any other discussion?
We're going to vote on it.
No, we're voting right now. If y'all are ready. I think you are. And I think it was Kelly and then Kay.
Councilmember Gilligan?
Yes.
Councilmember McEnroe?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes, with reservations.
Mayor Proton Delarosa?
No. No, I'm with it.
Thank you. Item D.6 is consideration, discussion, and possible action on accepting the unaudited monthly financial report and orderly investment report. This is Walter.
Good evening. We're just getting started in this fiscal year. This is the first monthly report of the fiscal year. So we have a lot of budget to work with, not a whole lot to report that stands out. I do want to say on page 28, when we're looking at our sales tax revenue, we are 3% below where we were last year at this time, just to point that out. Do you have any questions for me?
Do you see?
I have a question.
Kelly?
I'm sorry, can I interrupt you?
I feel honored to be interrupted by you.
Okay. On the hotel, motel tax expenditure, can you remind me why we paid PFC twice at some point? I saw that in here somewhere. Now, I can't find it, but it said we, we did two months at once.
It just means that we had, maybe we missed a month and so we had to catch up on a month.
We have a problem with transitioning, closing out the fiscal year, getting ready for the audit and processing this. All came, checked, or issued in that, like I said, in one time. Hold it, wait.
Yeah, usually if there's a fluctuation in the graph, I try to make a note of why.
Did everything do with the extra payment we had, we had that money on the bill?
I don't believe so.
Did it? Okay, I think there's more to do with having closed books out, okay, and start them up. And there's a lot of work that they have to, they bring down the end of this, we, we need to prepare for audit and then bringing the new set, the new budget online. And sometimes it goes over a little bit, and so it looks like a couple of days, you want very good. I don't think you'll see that only about this time of year.
Given the down and the up, other than that, anything you worried about, think we should be concerned about? Anybody want to move, we accept this?
I move.
I think it was Gary and then Willie.
Thank you.
Discussion. Anne, please call the roll.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Delarosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilligan?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Item D.7, I think somebody from the appraisal just called me and said, we have to vote.
Well, we got to, the real, the, I'm talking about.
Yeah, go ahead. No, you tell me. I don't understand.
Okay. On number eight on the cover sheet, we do not have 2,013 votes, or real votes, over 213 out of 5,000. We don't have 2,000 votes. If we did, we'd be putting somebody on the appraisal board.
To, it's two, we got a missing, oh, but the resolution, no, right.
The letter they sent you there about 2076.
Should say two, 13?
It says it's correct. Not a vote that the city had.
I will point out that I don't want us to not vote, but I will say that on page 77, there's one Bastrop resident up here, if that makes a difference to you.
And, and the council can split the votes five ways, two ways, however you want us to put the votes up. Or you can put them all at one.
Well, let me tell you, let me tell you something. The first two and the last two, I know are already on, I'll tell you what, all five of them are already on. They're already on, but somebody said we have to vote. So I just wish somebody.
I'm making recognition or motion that we, all 213 votes go to the city of Bastrop resident, Dr. McEnroe.
Second?
I'll second that.
Thanks. Any discussion? Such a slow second.
Can we, you, can, can we split it up?
Sure.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not understanding how this works.
Okay, you can split it up any way you want to. You can put, you can put four votes for one and two on seven, but it's not going to make a single bit of difference.
It can pick it up five thousand.
It's a symbolic vote for Roger if you pass it. You can, you can not pass it and, or you can propose an amendment to Willie's motion. Actually, our little tiny bit of votes, Doc couldn't go anywhere. We couldn't even find somebody to partner with that would make a difference. Y'all ready to vote? I don't mean this to vote out of court, I'm just saying, it's not going to have any good.
We have to vote, though.
Yes, we do. Anne, would you please, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember. Sorry. Mayor Proton Delarosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilligan?
Yes.
Councilmember McEnroe?
Yes.
Councilmember McEnroe?
I don't vote because I want to hear what it was instead.
A good reason for not voting, thank you. Now, Willie, I mean, what's your name? Mike?
No, we're going, last, 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 I think.
I'm moving.
Second? You move what? The adjournment, Willie seconds, we call the roll.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Delarosa?
No.
Councilmember McEnroe?
Hey.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
We're, we're now just looking at adjournment. Amen.
All right.